All right, we are going to go ahead and get started. Thank you for joining us tonight. This is the Education and Youth Committee. We are hearing, we are holding a hearing on the preparedness of city schools and Internet access as we start this next year. I'm Councilman Zeke Cohen, Chair of the Committee. I am joined tonight by my colleagues, Councilman John Bullock, Councilman Chris Burnett, Councilman Leon Pinkett, and Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark. We are also joined by Jennifer Coats, staff to the Committee, and Koi, also staff to the Committee. And I see President Scott on the call as well. Excellent. So without further ado, I want to welcome everyone who is tuning in online. As a reminder to our panelists, please keep your microphones muted until you are called on to speak. Tonight, we're going to be hearing from a number of stakeholders across our city. I'm going to open up with a few introductory remarks, but before that, wanted to turn it over to President Brandon Scott to kick us off tonight. Mr. President?
Thank you, thank you, Councilman, and thank you for holding this most important hearing. And thank you for allowing me a few moments to speak here because I have a pre-scheduled town hall with some seniors in a few minutes. But wanted to talk about this most important topic. A few minutes ago, Governor Hogan declared that all Maryland schools are safe to open their classrooms this semester for some level of in-person instruction. We know that that is not the way to go. COVID-19 is still a very real risk and a reality for all of us. Putting our students, teachers, and families at risk is a responsible decision. And even still, we must ensure that we are fully capable to service our students through virtual learning, mainly by addressing Internet access and the digital divide. Last semester, we saw firsthand how the digital divide impacts our students. Many of our students suffered academically because they didn't have the tools needed to keep track with distance learning. No fault of their own, the fault of individuals who refuse to address this issue for a long time now. We need to take both a short-term and a long-term approach to dealing with this issue. Short-term is making sure our students have what they need to learn this school year, which starts by next, starts next week, by any means necessary. Longer-term is about expanding broadband infrastructure to every neighborhood in the city to ensure that our students and our families have access to the Internet, which is now a basic right for our students, jobs. Because anyone trying to navigate the world in 2020, having a reliable Internet connection is essential. In both of these approaches, everyone has a role to play. Comcast and all our service providers, the school system, our business and philanthropic communities, the city, perhaps most of all, has a role to play by putting more skin in the game and convening stakeholders to solve this problem. I'll do everything in my power to make sure that we do this and do this the right way for the future of our city. And just wanted to say thank you to Chairman Cohen for bringing us together. Thank you to the BTU for all of their hard work and advocacy. Thank you to the school system. Thank you for Comcast. But most importantly, thank you to the students, families, and teachers who have been adapting to this unprecedented situation. This is not our deal, but we will make it through together. So thank you, thank you, Mr. Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before you go, just appreciate your leadership as we work together to bring that $3 million from the Children and Youth Fund to making every child in our city have at least a Chromebook. Really appreciated your work with us on that. And thanks for your leadership as well. So again, tonight, we are thinking about and going to hear from stakeholders on our preparedness as a city for what we know will begin as a virtual school year. Let's be very, very clear. It is an absolute moral mandate to make sure every child in our city has the tools to learn online. Just like President Scott just said, we know that our schools are not prepared to reopen physically. And so we need to do everything in our power to support making sure our children have what they need to learn in this moment. And that means a device and high-speed Internet. We are facing a racial reckoning unlike anything we've seen since at least the 1960s. And as we hear our young people shouting out that Black Lives Matter, public education in majority black and brown cities matters as well. As the young people of Baltimore, who we'll hear from in this hearing, have reminded us throughout the pandemic, their ability to learn in person and online is a civil rights issue. Cities like Baltimore, Chicago, Philadelphia, and Detroit have been forced to scramble and fend for ourselves. The fact that 40% of our families lacked home wireline Internet is a crisis. Digital redlining has devastated black and brown Baltimore. This is our moment to unite like never before for our children. And as we are confronted by the continued horrors of the global pandemic, I fully agree with President Scott. We must push back against the false hope of reopening schools too early. The health of our children, our families, and our educators is paramount. Let's be clear, too. Congress and the FCC have failed our kids. The absence of a clear plan and strategy to give every American student the ability to learn online is an abdication of our nation's commitment to a free public education. In this moment, we must view the Internet as a public utility, not a private luxury. I'm reminded of the rural electrification that America underwent in the 1930s. Women and men who did not have electricity had to work exponentially harder to accomplish even basic tasks. That's why our federal government, under FDR, made it a priority and got it done. Today, the Internet is just as essential as the ability to turn on the lights. We need that same sense of urgency. Our governor, whose state constitution guarantees an adequate education, vetoed the Kerwin legislation, which would have been enormously helpful for our children. And unfortunately, the State Secretary of Education has not provided adequate guidance throughout this pandemic. We've been left to figure this out and fend for ourselves. I want to also thank the students of Somos, the Baltimore Teachers Union, the Digital Equity Coalition, President Scott, my colleagues, all of those people across our city who've been pulling together for our children. And I also want to especially thank Baltimore City Schools, CEO Santalisis, Chief Tina Heike Hubbard, and their team, who have been out hustling, negotiating deals, raising private dollars, figuring this out so that our children can learn. They have done an exemplary job amidst near impossible circumstances. Tonight, we're going to hear from stakeholders across our city to make sure every single child is able to get online at the beginning of the school year to learn. With that, I am excited to start tonight's hearing off with testimony from some of the students of Somos, who have been leading a lot of the campaign around the digital divide. We're going to hear from Kimberly and Yashira. And if you all want to just unmute your mic, let's start with Kimberly.
Hey, everyone, I'm Kimberly Vasquez.
And I'm Yashira Vanzuela, and we're both rising seniors at Baltimore City Public High School.
We are also organizers of Somos, which stands for Students Organizing a Multicultural and Open Society, a student-led advocacy group in Baltimore. And since the pandemic, we have really been focusing on closing the digital divide in our city.
But before we continue, we just want to let you all know that our overall goal is to ensure that before the school year starts, students can access their education, meaning they have access to a device of their own and they have access to a high-speed Internet.
Having access to high-speed Internet is essential because daily teacher and student work is, especially now through this pandemic, is being assigned online. Further, people are being held accountable for work online. So it's just right that we provide families with the tools necessary to meet their responsibilities.
And to get to this goal, we need everyone to do their part. So we want to thank the following partners for their contributions towards ending the digital divide. Chief Tina Heike Hubbard and CEO Dr. Santalisis of BCPSS.
Our educators, specifically the Baltimore Teachers Union, and Ms. Mueller-Pas, who have been guiding and supporting youth voices for years, as well as grateful for the support of the business community.
And lastly, we want to thank Baltimore City Council, specifically Councilman Zeke Cohen, for quickly getting the bill passed that permitted $3 million from the Baltimore Children and Youth Fund to go to city schools to provide Internet access and devices to students in the city. Additionally, we want to thank them for passing a resolution in unison with Philly and Detroit in support of Somos' demands to increase digital equity.
For the past couple of months, Somos has demanded the following from Comcast: to first, permanently increase Internet Essentials upload speeds from 3 megabytes per second to 25 megabytes per second, and download speeds from 25 megabytes per second to 100 megabytes per second. Second, to make Internet Essentials free from the time enrollment until 60 days after full restoration of school. And finally, to open up all Xfinity hotspots, including those from least Comcast modems, and for it to be public, for it to be free to the public until 60 days after the full restoration of school.
Comcast, being the main Internet provider in Baltimore City and being the franchisee, they're responsible for providing high-speed Internet to families. We don't want to be in a place where one out of every two black and Latinx kids can't access their education. In other words, sacrificing and risking the education of the future generations of Baltimore City. Therefore, we hope that Comcast will be our partner and will help us ensure that students can access their education before the start of this upcoming school year by meeting to our three demands. And personally, I have a younger sibling that requires me to be their source of information in terms of technology and assignments seven days a week. And being a senior, I can't guarantee that I'll be there to support him, which is why I'm passionate with what we've been doing and the support we've gotten from other organizations.
On top of that, last school year, me and my two sisters faced several time constraints on completing work online due to having low-quality Internet. Not only that, but I was also put in a position where I had to pick and choose what classes I would work in due to the time slot I had. A student shouldn't have to forcibly decide whether their education or their sibling's education is more important. Moreover, a parent shouldn't have to decide whether their job is more important or if their children's education is more important. I don't want my sisters to be put more, at more of a disadvantage as a consequence of not being provided with high-speed Internet. So we hope that you choose to stand on the side of students, our right to education, and the future of our country. We want to give a final thanks to the advocates that have been in support of our journey to get our city the Internet access and quality we all deserve.
And thank you all for listening.
Well, thank you so much for your testimony and thank you for your continued leadership. And again, I would be remiss to say that were it not for these two young women and many young people throughout Baltimore, I know that the City Council would not have acted with the same amount of urgency as we have, both in passing the bill to move money from the Youth Fund to purchasing devices and also on this question of Internet access. So we sincerely, sincerely appreciate both of you and thank you for your testimony. We're now going to hear a parent's perspective, the newly-elected president of the Parent Community Advisory Board, Mr. Joseph Kane.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, President Scott, and the members of the Education and Youth Committee. Thank you for having us this evening. I'm Joe Kane, and I'll be speaking on behalf of the Baltimore City Public Schools Parent and Community Advisory Board. This evening, we know all the stats. We know all the data on just how large the digital divide is here in Baltimore. And so I'll spend a brief moment talking about integrity. I learned in the Army that integrity was doing the right thing even when no one was around. A simple dictionary.com search defines integrity as having the quality of being honest and having a strong moral principles. Simply put, a moral uprightness. COVID-19 has created an obstacle that no one was prepared for. It has forced parents to work from home and in many cases, out of work altogether. It has turned living spaces into classrooms and has rendered multimillion-dollar new school buildings useless. Parents and community members, guardians, weeks for weeks, weeks before school was set to begin, we're continuing to adjust to this new reality. Can we afford to purchase new technology? If not, how can I safely get to my student's school and get a loner between my complex work schedule or my pre-existing health condition? Who is going to help little Joe, right? Use, with his classwork, because as a single parent, I have to do my work or report to work. I can't send my child to school now because it's not safe and we're conducting virtual learning. But if schools were open, then I could possibly send them. But then what if he brings home the virus and now compromises my health? And then I can no longer work and our family is short of income. These are the challenges that the families are facing all across Baltimore City. This is what we're hearing at the Parent Community Advisory Board. Today, I'll pose a few simple questions to our friends at Comcast and other stakeholders. What are your principles? How will history tell your story? Will it be that after a decade Comcast of delivering accumulated total to shareholders in a return of 542% that you turn your back on the customers when they needed you most? Or will you live up to the words of your founder, Ralph Roberts, who once said, "In a big company, that you need certain fundamentals to believe in." And he said, "Around here at Comcast, everyone knows that integrity comes first." So, Mr. Chairman, I hope that during these challenges, these challenging times, that everyone can display the highest form of integrity and do what's right on behalf of our children in times like these. So thank you for allowing P-CAB an opportunity to speak this evening. And we look forward to contributing as we push to close the digital divide here in Baltimore.
Thank you so much, Mr. Joe Kane. Appreciate you as always. And congratulations on your new role as President of P-CAB. We look forward to working with you. Committee members, any questions for either Mr. Joe or our students? I know that Dr. Santalisis will be coming on in just a moment, but just wanted to make sure if anyone has any questions for them.
Chairman Cohen, I had two quick questions, if I might.
Sure, Councilman Pinkett.
The first, and maybe you can answer the first. Have the, I guess, demands or the requests from the young people, has that already been made to Comcast? And how long ago was that request made to Comcast?
Short answer is yes. Request was made, I want to say, seven weeks ago, I believe. But, you know, people could.
May 22nd, in writing.
May 22nd.
May 22nd, okay, thank you. And my second question was to Joe. I wanted to hear a little bit more about the challenges for parents, even if they do have access to the Internet. How the challenges of helping young people navigate, especially younger children, navigate the interactions with the teachers and the school. I mean, I think that parents need resources just as much as our young people. And I just wanted to hear a little bit more about that.
Yes, thank you, Councilman Pinkett, for that question. I think that one of the things that we're hearing is that in Baltimore, we know is unique. We face all types of socioeconomic situations. And right now, the plan that the district has set forth is a one-size-spread-all solution, unfortunately. And it doesn't really accommodate. I mean, synchronous learning doesn't allow flexibility, for example, for parents who work in the evening or work all night and have to be all day with their child. And so I think that one of the things, as we knock down some of the challenges parents are facing is just, how do we adjust to this new schedule, this new reality? What type of accommodations is the district willing to make to help parents? And especially if we're taking attendance, for example, right? So if I'm working all night long, I've got to get up with my child in the morning, who may or may not log on on time. Like, why are we holding that child accountable, right, to do that? So the challenges are multi-layered. But I think in a nutshell, it just goes to the point that we need more options as parents in Baltimore to really support our students while we do virtual learning. Because unfortunately, as much as we would like to, we cannot do school as normal in a virtual setting.
Thank you, Joe, and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman. And again, thank you to Joe. I see that our school CEO, Dr. Santalisis, I think is now online. Welcome, Dr. S. Thank you, thank you so much for joining us. If you need just a moment, we can go to our next speaker unless you're good.
I would appreciate it if you don't mind, Councilman. I apologize. I was living the tech nightmare a few minutes ago, so I apologize. But I will be ready when you call on me next, sir. Sorry about that.
You have all been there, so not a problem. All right, so let's go straight to our representatives from Comcast, Antoine Banks and Misty Allen. Appreciate both of you being here. I think that, I think you all have a presentation as well. So Jennifer, if we could help them out.
There's no presentation, Councilman.
Okay, got it.
We'll send it to you after the session.
Got it, got it, got it, okay, great. Your, sir.
Okay. Well, Chairman Cohen and members of the committee, first, I want to say thank you for this opportunity to address this committee regarding Internet access for students, even as the new school year sets to begin in a few weeks or so. First, you know me from my work in Baltimore to connect our children and our families. You know that digital equity is important to Comcast. We've been working to achieve digital equity since 2011. And we know that digital equity can be a game changer to someone's life, providing opportunities for a new job, education, and social connection. To further emphasize our commitment to digital equity and Baltimore City, I've asked Misty Allen, our Regional Vice President of Government and Community Affairs for Comcast, to present an overview of our efforts for back-to-school and also how we support Baltimore. Misty?
Thank you, Antoine, and thank you, Councilman Cohen, and members of the committee for this opportunity. As Antoine said, I know that he has, you know, made many visits over the years to each of your offices, participated at the community senior events and back-to-school events in your districts over the years, and as well as celebrations of events like our Comcast Leaders and Achievers Scholarship Program, all of which continue to demonstrate our longstanding commitment to supporting Internet adoption, not only for students, but for all low-income residents for whom Internet adoption remains a challenge. I do want to take just one moment to emphasize the word "adoption." Because earlier tonight, we heard reference to ensuring that wired broadband infrastructure is in every neighborhood. And a disturbing phrase, "digital redlining." I want to assure every member of this council and all of the participants here tonight that Comcast has that infrastructure in place to serve every house and every business in the city. There is no neighborhood that is not able to receive our products and services. We have over 430 miles of fiber network in the Baltimore City. What we're talking about tonight is really an issue that has existed long before this public health pandemic. But COVID-19 has brought forward that new urgency to solve the digital divide. And the digital divide remains a challenge. And it's something that we're committed to starting, you two can, sorry, we're committed to being a part of, you know, to bring that Internet connectivity for all. And our signature product is, we introduced back in 2011, Internet Essentials. It's through a collaborative effort of our governments, our nonprofit and business community partners, where we have been able to connect millions of households nationwide, including 42,000 households right here in Baltimore City. So that means that approximately 168,000 Baltimoreans have been connected to the Internet by our program, many for the very first time. We all know that there are many reasons for the digital divide. While there are 10 different wired and wireless Internet service providers in Baltimore, only Comcast has devoted years to helping Baltimore children and their families affordably connect to the Internet. Only one company has created a citywide and a nationwide program to help get subsidized computers in the hands of the students in our city. And only one of those 10 different Internet service providers has created digital literacy programs for every student and family in Baltimore. Comcast has spent the last nine-plus years in Baltimore and in cities around the country, helping to make Internet more affordable and to provide access to more affordable technology and digital literacy. So our program is designed to provide high-speed broadband Internet for just $9.95 a month. Internet Essentials customers may also purchase an Internet-ready laptop or a desktop at a discounted price of $149.99. And finally, customers can participate in hundreds of hours of free digital literacy and skills development online or in-person classes through many of the nonprofits that, some of which we may even hear from tonight. These are all partners in the efforts to address the barriers to Internet adoption, which is affordability, access to technology, and digital literacy. So with all of us now coping and navigating and understanding our COVID-19 world, Comcast has doubled down and we've taken additional steps in Baltimore and across the country to accelerate Internet adoption, including, you know, very early outreach to Baltimore City Public Schools because we knew this was going to have a dramatic change to education. So back in March, we began offering 60 days of free service to any new eligible customer who signs up for our low-income product who is in need of that service. We worked with Baltimore City Schools and the mayor's office to distribute flyers at the various food distribution sites to raise awareness of the availability of this product. We also permanently increased the speed to FCC, the Federal Communications Commission, defined designated high-speed broadband Internet. And that speed provides the bandwidth to have multiple users online simultaneously, streaming HD videos, being able to conduct the research on various websites to do their homework, take online classes, and video conferencing. For example, the speed that would support up to three Zoom calls at the same time, based on the publicly stated bandwidth requirement for that application, is supported by the speed level provided with our Internet Essentials program. We also took steps when the pandemic occurred. We made the largest free public Wi-Fi network in the country, one that is nearly three times the size of any other provider's network. And it's available for free to everyone, including non-Xfinity customers. And we're going to continue to provide that through the end of the year. We're also bringing together community partners, our governments, our school districts, through what we call our Internet Essentials Partnership Program. This is an opportunity for these partners to band together, to sponsor service for those households for whom we know $9.95 may still be out of reach. We have successfully partnered with cities all across the country, from Boston to Chicago to Portland to Atlanta and others, in pulling these agreements together and working to accelerate connectivity to families with children in the school district so they're ready for school. And we're working hard with BCPS. We're going to get an agreement done with them as well so that we can also make sure Baltimore families are connected for the school year. And other ways that we're supporting BCPS, we're working on a public service announcement for the school system. We're also upgrading the BCPS Public Educational and Government Video Channel so that delivery of school instruction can be delivered through that form as well. So Comcast knows that thousands of customers still need connectivity. And our world-class network of more than 430 miles is accessible to every resident and commercial business in the city. We also know that despite all of our efforts, that there are still people who aren't aware of the programs we offer. We also are aware that there are going to be other challenges and barriers that we have to overcome to get these people connected to the Internet. So we cannot do it alone. And we're here tonight to partner with others, with this council, the mayor, our school system, our community organizations, to continue to break the barriers to Internet adoption and work to get every house. the barriers to internet adoption and work to get every household connected in Baltimore City. Nassar Sadhar wrote an article, "Lack of Internet Access Holds Immigrant Communities Back." This was just published a few days ago in the Philadelphia Inquirer. It's a thoughtful piece reflecting on the unique challenges of immigrant families. And beyond just cost of internet service, there are things that we have to overcome as a community, such as language barriers, migration patterns, and fear of signing up for the service. So again, working with our partners to be able to work with those families and to make sure that they know the power of the internet, we're committed to working with each of you. And we, again, thank you very much for the time tonight and look forward to learning more and having a thoughtful discussion going forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And, you know, Mr. Banks, thank you for joining us. Thank you for the ways in which you personally have shown up for our city. Colleagues, we're going to go in rounds of two questions. I'm going to start, so I wanted to go back to the phrasing, some of the, Ms. Allen, on the term "digital redlining," right? So we know that about 40% of our city in 2018, from a study that the Abel Foundation did, did not have access to home wireline internet. And we also know that when we look at the geography of who does and does not have access, it resembles pretty closely the redlining maps from the 1940s, where federal government essentially carved out areas in black Baltimore where banks then did not land. To me, that's where the term comes from. That said, I am curious, Ms. Allen, so just to be 100% clear, every part of our city, Cherry Hill, Sandtown, Winchester, is fully covered and has access to the same speeds as every other area in our city?
Yes, sir, absolutely. Same network, same quality of service that would be provided in all parts of the city. And Baltimore City has the same world-class network in Baltimore City as every other city or community that we serve across the country.
Okay, so there is no coverage desert whatsoever in Baltimore?
That's correct. I mean, there are parks and cemeteries and golf courses that may not have the connectivity, but the residences and commercial addresses, and we have a lovely map that will show you the density of the infrastructure that serves every neighborhood in the city. Correct.
Great. Could you provide that data? Specifically, what I'm looking for is data on connectivity for all throughout Baltimore and also speeds that are being delivered. I have heard from some folks in Cherry Hill, some folks in Sandtown as well, challenges with getting connected through Comcast, but would love it if you would commit to sharing with us any internal data that you have on coverage and also speeds. Would that be, could you make that publicly available for us?
So I'll take that back if I understand it, but yes, all of the products and services that are on our website, if you enter your address, you'll know what products and services are available in the Baltimore area. Those are available to every neighborhood and to every business in the city, yes. And we will share the map that shows where our infrastructure is and that it crosses every neighborhood in the city.
I'm sorry, I guess I misspoke a little bit. So what I'm specifically looking for is data on coverage and connectivity. If you could just show through some sort of GeoMap, block-level data on who uses your product and the speeds at which it's deployed, how many households in a geographic area, that's more what I'm asking for.
I understand the question now, thank you. And we'll take that back and follow up with you.
Okay, great. Would it be possible to get that within a week of this hearing?
I'll do my best.
Thanks. Appreciate it. All right, colleagues, let me see.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, Councilman Bullock?
I did have one question, if I could. And this, we can either go to Ms. Allen or Mr. Banks. I believe you were going down a list of jurisdictions where you had partnerships. So I'm curious as to where you've been successful, and as you talk about an agreement with Baltimore City Schools, what contributed to any successful agreements in the past, and what can we do to be successful here in Baltimore?
So, Misty, I'll take that one. So a few examples of major collaborative efforts that we have is the City of Chicago, City of Philadelphia, City of Atlanta, City of Sacramento, and several others. Now, close to home, we have, we've worked with county public school systems, and actually we finalized a sponsor service agreement with them back in April. Anarundo County Public Schools, Howard County, they're also sponsoring services. So many of these efforts were collaborative at the very beginning with multiple solutions. They understood, they met with us and met with other providers to figure out what type of issues and what type of services best work for their students. And for us, wired services from Comcast, but also wireless solutions and others, but it really took a robust public outreach effort that, you know, came from council, came from the school systems in those areas. So, and that's what made or drove the program to its success.
And then there's a couple of kind of things that Chairman Cohen mentioned. So I think there's a question around either gaps in service or how we close some of the gaps and making sure that folks are connected. So how do we support getting our young people connected? Because as you mentioned, it's critical for the academic success to connect.
Correct. And we understand. So, you know, for us, it's really about education. So, which I would say city agencies, our community organizations, and BCPS are the best, you know, you guys are in the best positions to know who in the communities are still in need of internet adoptions. I remember working with the city council in 2014 to share information on our IE. And I can tell you right now, double the numbers of families who connected. In 2015 and 2017, I worked with the council and Parker Rex to really identify, we can say, places where free internet hubs will really benefit. And we identified 54 learning zones to provide free internet accessible to anyone who needs access. And in 2017, we worked with Housing Authority of Baltimore City to enhance our program and open it up to individuals who live within public housing and/or receive heard assistance. And HABC sponsored multiple sign-ons. So, you know, these were successful partnerships that we know that they worked because of all of us coming together, you using your network, and helping us find those solutions that matter. And, you know, we know that your leadership and network in the past has worked to help bridge this digital divide, but right now, imagine if we had a citywide public awareness campaign, educating all those individuals and families who really don't have access, well, they have access, but who really don't understand how this service benefit them, you know, and we show them how these resources are available, and it ultimately closes the digital divide. You can help us and other providers reach those in need. And that's the best way to do it, that's the most successful way, and it has worked in the past. And right now, you know, we know that our service, the wired solution, provide households with wired high-speed internet. But those families who, or residents who may not be secure in housing, or others who need something else, the best way are wireless solutions. We know that. And, you know, those families really need to understand that. And the connectivity assistance is something that we really need to talk about. And that's a process of really educating them, having an organized method of reaching these families and teaching them about the digital navigation necessary and the digital skills training necessary in order to safely navigate through these, through our portal and, you know, to do whatever they need to do for whatever reason, healthcare, job applications, whatever. I mean, it all makes sense, but we have to have a real conversation and figure out how we can move the needle forward to connect as many people possible. And like I said, this collaboration is bringing all providers together, is talking about solution, bringing stakeholders together, and this seems to be a start.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Houseman. Councilwoman Clark?
Yes, I have not met Ms. Allen before, but of course, we know Mr. Banks, and he used to be one of us. And welcome back to City Hall virtually.
Yes, virtually.
My question is this. Putting together all these ideas that you have and ability to bring together people from the industry, how soon can you respond positively to the two big issues that so most students have asked for? One is the higher speed of download and upload, which is crucial. They're getting thrown off in the middle of assignments, they really are, and it's not because somebody's just playing some, you know, some game online in the other room. It's really a problem and it's hurting. The second one is the extension you have done of Internet Essentials, but only two months still with not needing to pay. So then the paying kicks in, and so many of the early scholars who got online are just going into their school year now without that kind of support. And finally, the hotspot issue, which is getting hotter every day, and how to get that into the homes now that fall and then winter is coming and the darkness will fall, and it won't be quite as much fun to do school lessons in a public park. So it's really one question. We really are waiting for those three answers, and I'm wondering when we can get them and how they can be positive, what that's going to take to be able to go, to let our students have their internet service until this epidemic is over and they can be back in their classrooms. How can they get the modems they need and to be able to be online from home? And then how can they get the speed up so that they don't get kicked off their assignments? When can we hear back about those three specific issues?
So, Councilwoman Clark, thank you for that. You know, we have certainly heard those requests. We are hearing the students and their experiences and others with that. So I will take these kind of probably out of order, but I'll start with the request for free service. So again...
Councilmember Clark, you're muted. It looks like you're still talking. Chair.
Extension of free service, but you're talking about the one for the service itself under Internet Essentials, right?
Yes, yes, ma'am. So, yes, so Internet Essentials is created to support low-income families. And so, yeah, that's the program that I'm talking about.
Okay, and that's the one that, and that's the one they're asking for an extension of the free two months to the end of the period in which we do not have in-person schooling?
Yes, ma'am. I think, so right currently, we have extended that offer of two free months for new customers through the, at least through the end of this year. And so, you know, for us to...
So is that retroactive? I'm sorry, I don't mean to get into a debate, but I'm here for these three questions, and I'm afraid you might have to leave, and you're the one that has to carry it back, but basically...
Yeah, no worries. So with respect to the offer, the free 60 days, two months of service is available to all new eligible customers through the year. After the free two months, it does transition to a paid service of $9.95 a month, and that is a steeply discounted product of high-speed broadband internet. And what we are really trying to bring together in understanding tonight is that for those for whom that $9.95 may still be a challenge, a barrier, it's still out of reach for them, that is where these partnered agreements come, just like we have important services that require additional support for low-income families.
Just get a little bit of...
I'm sorry.
Would you mind muting your...
Pardon me.
No worries.
I thought it wasn't.
Go for it, Misty.
Okay, thank you, thank you, yeah. So after it transitions to the paid service, but we do know that the $9.95 still remains a challenge for many families. And so what we're really trying to illustrate today is, just like every other important service, that these families need assistance and support, like food insecurity, housing assistance, medical, other, you know, heating and electric bills, for example, or even bringing it back home, that's where we come together and have these partnership agreements to help fill that gap. Let's identify those families in need, let's find them the support collectively as a community, and sponsor that service so that they have that continuity of connection, you know, for schooling and really hopefully beyond, because we know that connectivity uplifts the entire family. So that's our response to the free service at this time.
I've used my time on one thing, and actually, that's not what we need. Everybody needs food, et cetera. But from Comcast, we need free service until the population of the schools gets back into the schools for a couple months and is okay. So we'll have to continue this and the other two issues as well, because so far, the answer I hear is no. And I think that you have it in you to do more. You're a great big organization and one of the biggest in Baltimore, and you've got, like, you have a monopoly here that we voted for, and now I guess the time is coming when we're saying we need to return on that monopoly investment.
So, there's a lot to unpack there. I'll set aside for... I have frozen, let me stop my video. So let me focus on the other two components that you talked about, the open residential hotspots request as well. So... Um, so importantly for, for that, you know, I want to make sure that everyone understands our preference is to get that direct connectivity into every home. That's the business we're in. We're in the wired broadband internet service. And so we believe that that will provide the best experience for customers. And that is why we created Internet Essentials, to assist low-income individuals to get that experience. Our residential access points are just not intended for broad public use, and it's not engineered to support a higher volume of users. And also, even if we opened those up, you know, and, and, uh, two doors down or two, three apartments down, it's going to be a lesser quality service. That's not our business. There are other providers who would provide that type of wireless connectivity and are welcome, and, and we encourage that. And I think that kind of addresses your statement about a monopoly to an extent. We don't have a monopoly, ma'am. In fact, the agreement actually states that the city reserves the right to give franchises to any other competitor or provider. And in fact, there are actually up to ten companies that are providing internet data services to Baltimoreans today. So we do not have a monopoly on internet service.
We do, uh, we do have a franchise with your service, however. And that's, we consider you partners. And it's a two-way street, that's all. I, I'm not, it's not fair for me to carry on any longer with these questions because so many other people, including, um, the super CEO of the school system are waiting, standing by. I would like to continue them with you very, very shortly, if I may, in another setting.
Absolutely. We, we are happy to have those conversations. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Clark. Uh, Councilman Burnett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, colleagues and representatives from Comcast and all the school, uh, via other agencies represented. Uh, I did have, uh, two issues I wanted to raise. Uh, one comes from a constituent of mine, uh, who has been struggling to get online using the, the service. And it, to, to not like go too far in the weeds on this particular instance, but I, I, I want to bring it up because I know this is something that a lot of parents are dealing with. Uh, this constituent, uh, is in, currently in a dispute with Comcast, uh, over a bill. And to, in order to enroll into your program, they cannot have any outstanding, uh, uh, debt or, or outstanding unpaid bills, uh, in which this person does, but is currently disputing that. Um, and, and, you know, I understand in that situation, they're trying to work through, trying to get a payment plan, they're trying to do everything they can do to make sure that they can get back online, uh, in time for the start of the school system or school year. Uh, but the, the, you know, not to go in the weeds in that, that particular situation, but I know that especially during a pandemic, there may be a lot of folks just like that individual who are unemployed because of the pandemic, uh, may have, uh, some unpaid bills because they have no ability to pay, um, or, or pay what they owe. Um, or maybe they're in some sort of dispute and they've been told that they have to be fully paid up. So this person is willing to go into a payment plan and do whatever they can do to get back online, um, but are, have hit a wall because they've been told that they can't enroll in a, they can't enroll in this, this initiative without being fully paid. Uh, and I just think a lot of people out there who may be in this exact same situation, I know for sure that they are. Um, and it's something that, you know, I, I think should strongly be reconsidered. Um, and I'll, I'll, an opportunity to respond, because my second question is, is in a little bit different direction.
Okay, it's, um, thank, thank you. Um, we would love to assist. So if we want to take that offline for that specific family to look into that situation, um, you have our commitment to do that. But broadly speaking, um, we have waived any requirement on bad debt as a condition for eligibility for Internet Essentials. So through the end of the year, if you have debt with Comcast, that is being waived and not a barrier to getting the product. Um, this sounds like something broke down or there might be a unique situation going on here. So let's follow up specifically on that. But that is, um, a policy. It's on our website, and that is what we're trying to get out, to communicate to people, is if you do owe Comcast, um, service, you know, that debt is not going to prohibit you from being eligible for Internet Essentials.
And, okay. Well, the, the other, the other, I think, barrier, um, and maybe I'm misunderstanding your response. So if someone is trying to get on a payment plan, um, i- until they have completed the plan, are they able to participate in this program?
So that should not be a condition for eligibility. There may, I think there's, there may be something else going on there in that specific instance. So, so I think we probably have to look at that one individually. But, um, again, it, to be eligible, um, for internet, uh, service, if you have prior debt with us, that is being waived as a condition for eligibility.
Okay. Uh, and I'll, and I'll work with you offline on that, that individual. Um, the other issue that has arisen around, uh, this, this common issue of payment, um, is that there are, uh, deposits that are required, um, based on credit. Uh, is that correct?
At this time, there's no credit checks or other fees required, uh, to apply for Internet Essentials.
Okay. Uh, for this particular program, okay. But this is something that would, would normally be?
For, for, um, uh, someone who's just taking traditional Xfinity services, yes, there's generally probably a credit check, um, associated with that, yes.
Okay. Um, the second question, I guess it's kind of my second, I don't know if you want me to share, had a different, I guess it'd be my third question.
Councilman, we'll say that was two questions smushed together, so why, why don't you get your second one there?
Those were the one A and one B. Um, the, the other one was around, um, uh, you, earlier in your statement, you, you said that there was increased speed, um, to an adequate speed level. Um, but what I believe what you did was increase the, the max speed. Uh, can you provide data on the actual speeds that families on the Internet Essentials program are receiving? And if, in, I guess, uh, to be or to that would be, were those speeds, uh, increased, uh, for that particular program? And this is more in line with the, the commentary that Councilwoman Clark raised earlier about being able, that there being multiple people trying to access service at the same time, uh, and that, and their ability to stay connected at the same time. And it's something I've heard, uh, in, in my district as well, folks are.
Yeah, so I will definitely share, um, with this committee, um, our speed tests that were required to provide to the Federal Communications Commission, the FCC, that shows, um, the, uh, the speed that customers receive and the accuracy, um, for, for, for that. So we'll follow up with that in, indeed. Um, I think it's important though, also for committee members and, and just, you know, u- users. Uh, I, I do not, uh, pretend to be a, a technology expert, uh, by any means. My IT department knows that. Um, but there are other factors, um, that impact that in-home internet experience that really have nothing to do with speed. Um, you know, looking at, um, the different software and app, applications that we're all using, uh, there's latency that happens with that. I think people may have read earlier this week, I think it was Tuesday, Zoom crashed and businesses and schools and, and people all over, uh, the United States panicked because they couldn't do their, their Tuesday morning meetings, you know? So those are things that happen. The age of the device, um, the software compatibility on that device, um, is that up to date? The router location, is it centralized? Is it there? You know, are there other things that we need to do to optimize, uh, the, the, uh, internet experience in the home? So there's a lot of things that impact that experience that go beyond just the in, the internet speed uh, of the product as well. So we, we always do want to look at these questions, issues, you know, holistically and see what's going on, um, at times. You know, for example, um, my, I can see that my internet is, is strong here, but I saw that I had to go off, um, off of my video for, for a moment. You know, those are things that, that happen, uh, with the, the use of these different applications and stuff. But we'll follow up and definitely get to our FCC speed test, um, data.
Uh, Miss, I'm, I'm sorry, just, I just wanted briefly follow up on my colleague's question, because I thought during your testimony, you had said that you had increased the speeds. Um, and so I think what he was asking, and what I'm curious about as well, is did Comcast increase speeds for Internet Essentials? Which, you know, we, we sort of, is the question in program? Or is the program in question right now for so many of those children and families? Uh, so that's what I'm curious about.
Yes, we, we did increase it, um, at the beginning of, of March when the pandemic hit. Um, it was a fifteen, uh, speed download and a two-speed upload product. And we did upgrade it to the FCC's designated high-speed broadband, broadband speed of 25.3. So yes, and that's a permanent increase. Um, it's not going to revert back to 15.2. That's a permanent increase that we have made.
But just to be clear, that is the minimal that the FCC permits for us to modify, right?
No, it's not that it's, um, the minimal permitted. Um, as you'll, and, um, you can see that there are offers, um, today from other providers that can offer lower speeds. Um, this is what's considered high-speed and broadband. So high-speed broadband internet is 25.3.
Which is what you provide though, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay. That, that was my understanding is that for broadband, the FCC minimum is three and twenty-five?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Um, Councilman Pinkett?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I, I think I have two questions, but I, I do want to say, obviously, this is a, um, educational hearing, but, uh, this digital divide goes even further be, further beyond simply, um, you know, our educational needs. Um, you know, this, us addressing this divide really, um, impacts, um, employment, um, how we redevelop communities, how we invest in businesses, which businesses will go to certain sections of, of our city. And so, um, while we, um, address how it impacts the schoolhouse, um, this really, um, determines the future of communities as, um, Councilman, or Chairman Cohen said, communities like Cherry Hill and Fantaun Winchester. If they don't have that access, it's not, not having plumbing for a community, um, at this point because of the, the need. But I, I did want to, um, mention, um, earlier, um, I think both, uh, Misty and Antoine mentioned some of the partnerships, um, in other municipalities. And, um, I know Baltimore's not, Philadelphia and Baltimore's not Atlanta, but, um, I think maybe about three weeks ago, there was announced the, uh, equity plan in Philadelphia, seventeen million dollar equity plan, where, um, they were able to provide, I think, two years of free internet. And in Atlanta, um, there's a plan, I think called, um, Get Our Kids Connected, where they were able to provide, I think, a year of free internet. And so I guess what I want to know is, you know, what aren't we doing in Baltimore? Maybe it's the philanthropic community, maybe it's the business community. But what, 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 what do we need to do in Baltimore to look more like the plans that were created in Philadelphia and Atlanta?
I don't know if you want to take this, but just, uh, on a quick note, is, is really, um, being that, that, that spokesperson, um, the, the citizens have a trust in you as a, as an elected official. Um, and, um, Dr. Santelisa, the school system as the, the, um, chief educator. Um, and when, when you all are able to say, hey, this is, uh, an issue, what, and this is what we are going to do, and that's bringing all stakeholders together. The Comcast's, the GigaStreams, the, um, Verizons, the T-Mobile, and all the other providers, um, who have all different type of, their own niche. Ours is wired. Um, we, and we know that works for a lot of people, but not for everyone. But when you can bring all of us together and we sit down at a table and figure out what we can do to provide services to students for whatever amount of time possible. And then we have the philanthropic community and those nonprofit partners, um, all of us coming together and creating that solution. And then we'll have that Chicago Connect. And just, uh, as a matter of fact, Chicago connected, um, 100,000 students for a period of four years. Four years. That's amazing. Imagine what we can do in Baltimore. But we just, we all have to come together to, to really sit down and figure it out. We've started that process, um, but, you know, we need someone to kickstart it for us. And, and that, you know, it, it's, it's limited with what we can do as a, as a provider.
Right, so-
Add to that, um, and go from there.
So, so Antoine, what, what we're saying is that while we are appreciative of the Baltimore model, um, it's inadequate. We want the Chicago model. We want the Philadelphia model. We want the Atlanta model. What, what we're doing in Baltimore is not, did not meet the need. And, um, we, we, we have moved beyond digital equity. We want digital, we want digital inclusion. We, we, we want, we, we want us, we want people to be in a place and a space where they have the technology that they need to really thrive in our current economy. And right now, we, we're not getting it, even though, um, you know, we can't argue with what Comcast has done and how you've augmented the plan, but it still falls short of what we, our families and our students need. And so we, we're asking for you to be the champion that Comcast has been in those other cities and truly partner with us to get us to that point. Um, and, and if this is the first part of that conversation, um, then let's do that. Um, you, you've proven that you can do it in other places. Do it here in Baltimore. Um, so thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't have another question, but I do want to hear Antoine and Misty's response.
So, you know, I'll just, um, I'll just build off of what Antoine, you know, said. Um, it can happen here. Um, I have confidence that it's going to happen here. Um, what we need to do is, like Antoine said, get everybody at the table. We need to pull the resources. There's going to be budgetary requirements, um, that are being built into budgets of, of this city, um, going forward for this, because it is just like an extension of services, um, where we're filling a gap. And I think you said, you know, beautifully, digital inclusion. So we can't do it all alone as one company and it takes the community. And so you're right, this is the start of that conversation. Let's get around the table. Let's figure out where those resources can come from. Let's call, you know, um, let's, let's tap into the expertise of our nonprofits. Um, they know how to, you know, break through those language barriers and, and get out there and tell us how, what it takes to mobilize and move these people to get connected. But this is the start, sir, and I, and I think we're going to get there, absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just, I, 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 um, and, and Chairman Cohen, you've, you've been leading the council on this effort. And so I don't, I don't know if there's any way that you can express a greater sense of urgency around this than you have already done. Um, this is, this, this form of technology is paramount to breathing air. We, you know, our, our young people, um, need to breathe, and I, I hate to use that expression. But, and if we don't get this right, we're talking about our schools being 21st century ready. Well, we've already missed that. We, we should have been doing that in the 20th century. So, we, we've got to get this right. And, and Comcast, I, I know that you hear us, and I know you hear the passion in our voices. Um, we, we are depending on you to help us with this fight and really be the champion that you can really be in this. And if that means that you take a, a greater leadership role in pulling together the community of Baltimore and saying that, you know, y- you are a part of our, our equity plan and getting this done. Um, and these are the steps that need to happen, philanthropic community. These are the steps that need to happen, business community, in order for us to meet the need of this city. Um, that's the kind of champion that we're looking for in Comcast. Thank you.
Thank you. We, we hear you. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Councilman Pinkett, um, and sincerely appreciate, uh, your point, um, about wanting our city to really be a leader in closing the digital divide. And, you know, I would also just say that, um, as we look at other places where Comcast has created, um, these types of deals, was just talking to a colleague of mine, uh, Councilmember Tim in Philadelphia. Um, you know, my hope is when we come to the table, that there is equity in the arrangement and that institutions that are already having to pay extraordinary costs for bringing new 21- for bringing new 21st century school buildings. And just the basic essentials for our children, like our school system, are not stuck or built. Because they already take on an enormous burden of many of our society's ills that we've essentially placed onto them and asked them to solve. And so I hope that, and I do believe we will get there in Baltimore. But I hope that in being a partner, Comcast truly brings its best self and not just, you know, a small amount of charity out of the foundation, because charity is not change, but really works with us on those rates and on those speeds. Because I think that at the end of the day, what we hope to end with is wireless that really works for our kids. And the last thing I'll say, unless any other colleagues have any comments or questions on Comcast, just going back to the conversation about speeds, the 3G and 25 megabits, right? Well, that is what the FCC defines as the minimum for broadband. I hear from students, what we hear all the time is that that is not enough. That young people continue to struggle with Zoom, with Google Classrooms. And I don't think Baltimore is unique. I don't think we're a unicorn. I hear that from young people in Philly, in Chicago, in Detroit, and all across the globe. So I know that's what the FCC has said. Unfortunately, we haven't seen kind of leadership out of the FCC that I would hope for during a global pandemic that's forced most Americans onto the internet, any virtual spaces. But again, my sincere hope is that we come to the table, that young people from Comcast, from some of us, who have spoken so eloquently about what they need, are given a platform to lead in those conversations and to be a true partner, and that Comcast will step up as well. Unless I have other colleagues that want to jump in. Seeing none, Antoine and Misty, any last comment from you all?
No, thank you. We very much appreciate the the time tonight and look forward to future discussions.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. All right. So we are joined by our school CEO, Dr. Sonia Santa Lisa. I do want to personally thank Dr. Santa Lisa because I've seen how her and Chief Tina Heick Hubbard and their whole team has been really dealing with what are extraordinary circumstances and having to be agile, having to be mobile, having to negotiate on internet contracts, having to purchase Chromebooks and deal with supply line challenges in China, just having to do things that normal school systems typically don't have to contend with. We know that school is going to be virtual starting in the fall. I'm assuming the governor's press conference did not change that. So again, I want to thank Dr. Santa Lisa for her leadership and for being here with us tonight to explain how it is going to look and what the needs are coming into this school year.
Great, thank you so much, Councilman Cohen. And I want to thank, can you hear me okay? You can hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, wonderful. But I I just want to thank you, the rest of the city council, all of the advocates for the real press. And I mean, physical advocacy press, not presses and media around this issue. And I do think it is, you know, as as the spokespeople from Comcast just referenced, it really is about a community coming together from a variety of standpoints. And I really appreciated Councilman Pinkett's question about what will it take? Because I do think that is the question that we have large numbers of people mobilizing. But I want to thank the city council, who along with the mayor, very early on in this crisis, committed additional funds in an already resource-challenged city. You really spoke very early of your commitment to the city's young people with the $3 million that you allocated from the youth fund that went to purchasing devices for city school students. So I don't want that to get lost in the discussion around broadband and internet. But I think you all proved your leadership and commitment to this area early on. And thank you again for your patience. And by the way, if there are any questions, yes, North Avenue also clearly has challenges with internet from time to time. But I think we do have a presentation of just a couple of slides to help more guide the discussion. So I will try not to take too much time. But as we pull that, as we pull that up, and thank you so much for doing that. One of the things that I think is important to know that we have made progress. And so, yes, no, that was fine. It's like, perfect, thank you so much. We're going to give an update of where city schools tech preparedness is for this school year, 2021. And then I'm going to provide some context. I'll give a brief overview of the city schools' fall reopening plan. You'll see our fall reopening plan, and the link to that is provided here. For those who have not had the opportunity yet to do so, you'll see that today's discussion really is situated for us within that plan. Thank you, next slide. So with regard to the fall reopening plan, I know that there is a lot of buzz and chatter right now going on, given the governor's press conference earlier. We are still digesting, I've gone from meeting to meeting. So we will, I will sit back and digest the full of what the governor has said. What I will also emphasize, though, is actually, we are continuing to start virtual. We said that, we said that we will open the 2021 school year virtually and that our goal actually is, as is safe, to really prioritize small groups of students. And I have to say that, small groups of students that are prioritized with in-person instruction when possible during this virtual learning period. This is building on some of the work that we had a staff who volunteered for over the summer that was very successful, even though it was small. And so we still are on that path. As of now, nothing in the press conference really changes that from first look. But I will go back and make sure, because our reopening plan has has always had provisions for this. I think what we're hopeful about is the communication, hopefully about common indicators will help us chart a course that is clearer across the state around those indicators. But again, I'll be taking a deeper look. And one of the things that we have said from the beginning is that we are going to be taking our cue from the health indicators and that, again, we really have been learning and balancing the the need to, you know, the need for certain students that are not being served to have access in person. Families will always have a virtual choice for the foreseeable future. And and I think we know that at the very basic level, this conversation that we are situated in today is for the foreseeable future. And I think I have said minimally for the next 18 months, minimally, we are going to need some kind of robust infrastructure and access for our city schoolchildren, regardless of what the shifts between small groups and all virtual and eventually when it is safe, hybrid. We know, regardless of that discussion, that the need for access to broadband, high-speed internet, forgive my lack of tech precision. I have said to some folks, my brother-in-law, who is a software design engineer with iRobot, laughs at the fact that I now have been immersed in the world of technology and broadband. But I think it's important, as a reminder, that, again, we are starting school, September 8th, all virtual. And so our planning has been around the acknowledgement that we need to be able to start school with as many young people as possible at the start of school, having devices with, even with delays. Our goal is that every young person in Baltimore City should, that that is in need, should have a device. And that being either a Chromebook, laptop, or tablet. And then every young person, in order to even be at the starting gate, and I just want to emphasize, to be at the starting gate, to be able to engage virtually, and even in a partial virtual world, is going to need access to high-speed internet. And so it is with that that I think we really have been embracing the need that has been expressed here tonight. Next slide, please, thank you. So with regards to Baltimore City's digital divide, many people have spoken to this already tonight. Again, had I gone when originally the councilman you had scheduled for me to go, this might have been newer news. But by way of reminder, we too have used the American Community Survey and the Baltimore Digital Divide report from ABLE that I know has been referenced here tonight to do some of our initial planning. We know that these numbers, we anticipate are only going to increase, given some of the financial forecasting for the economy and for our city, that when these surveys and when this analysis was taken, was pre the economic impact of the pandemic. So we know that these are, in some ways, very entry-level thresholds and that we're going to need to have flexibility in in some of these numbers as we anticipate them increasing until we really can get our economy back on a robust track. Next slide, please. So with regards to our preparedness plan, you'll see here a kind of reemphasis with additional detail of the goals that I that I just referenced around device distribution and internet access. You'll see our initial targets here, to distribute 65,000 student devices and 5,000 staff devices. We know we may need flexibility on either end, but we felt and still feel that this is a robust enough target that allowed us to plan. You'll see here that the approximately 20,000 students lacking internet access was the result of our survey responses, which were at a rate of 48%. But also really increasing because the work that our principals and school communities are are doing, our community schools coordinators are now doing kind of on-the-ground touchwork to continually survey families to better understand the needs. And knowing that if you're doing online surveys or surveys through the phone, by virtue of the fact that those are technology-based, we might not actually even be capturing the true number or a full number of of families that that require internet access. Next slide, please. So with regard to device distribution, this slide gives some highlights of where we are now. We're sitting at about 70,000, excuse me, 70,000 devices that we will be able to make available between now and the opening weeks of schools. We have about approximately 25,000 devices and 3,000 hotspots that have already been distributed to city school students. We know or plan to distribute over 10,000 more devices before the first day of school on September 8th. We also have orders placed for more. Here, you'll see 20,000 devices. And for those who may not know, and I know that, excuse me, Councilman Cohen just referred to the fact that there are serious delays in school districts across the country. We had a number of emergency procurements that our board enabled us to get out so that we are hoping we can actually get our devices sooner than some school districts. But a lot of the international trade disputes between the United States and China, combining with increased demand from across the country, has met delays. Some devices in some places have been delayed anywhere, you know, between, you know, from October to September. We are very hopeful that some of our quick, on-the-ground work, we are hoping will yield more devices landing within the month of September. You'll also see that this week we began device distribution to teachers. That will also continue. Teachers that have need have been directed to reach out to their school leader. And we, again, began that distribution this week. And then you'll see that we have also worked and to order 1,000 devices on behalf of charter schools, just to help provide some support and ensure that they too can have what they need by September 8th. Again, given kind of the competitiveness of securing devices right now, as well as just the challenge of breaking through what is a backlog, supply chain, we are providing additional support to our district charter schools in this area as well. Next slide, please. So with regard to our Comcast strategy, our partnership and our, in terms of our colleagues who just presented, this is a an overview of where we are in our working together from a city schools lens. We have, I know that I've gotten many questions about the 7,000 households that started out with internet essentials, but that we had concern about the cessation of service, given some of the economic challenges that we know many of our families are under. We had concern about that that service being, excuse me, that should not be on right now. This is the challenge, sorry about that. Okay, I have a young person who can't get on her course. This is just the Santa Lisa's Day for challenging tech issues. So what I would say is, sorry, so we have reached some agreement and with the additional support from the state's allotment of their CARES money, we have been able to use that additional money that was set aside for broadband. We got clearance for funds that will be designated and awarded to Baltimore City via our application, that we will be able to extend that service through December 31st. So those resources were very timely and will enable us to go through a good portion of first semester. And we're now working to raise funds to support families to be connected through the Comcast Internet Essentials beyond the 31st. We want to thank Comcast for the agreement to guarantee service levels. As you see here, of at least 25 Mbpss in terms of download and 3 Mbps upload. The fact that I can even reference that technological term means it has been a deep dive into the world of technology. And then we are, as our Comcast colleagues referenced, working through other contract items. And you'll see some examples here. So again, I think the good news from this slide is that families who need access to internet, 7,000 households, which equals anywhere between 14 and 20,000 city school students, will be able to begin the school year online with broadband access. Next slide, please. You'll see our T-Mobile strategy. And due to the work of Chief Heick Hubbard, Monique Sims, and others on the team, we have reached a deal with T-Mobile for hotspots. For hotspots, my apologies. For hotspots, my apologies again. And we have distributed actually over 3,000 hotspots thus far. Our initial agreement with T-Mobile was for 10,000. We have increased that to 15,000 hotspots that we will continue distributing within the current weeks. You'll see here, again, through that same state funding for broadband that was designated to go to urban, urban areas, we can, again, even with the T-Mobile hotspots, extend or guarantee and cover the cost through December 31st. And we are in discussions there and really hope to extend the service on the T-Mobile hotspots from January to August. And we have fundraising efforts underway overall. I think one of the things that that is important to understand by way of context is that within city schools, I've kind of divided our needs within three bands, the first being the immediate start-to-school September 8th. And as we stand now, we are in pretty good shape for that launch, to be able to make sure that young people or families that desire it and that we can reach. And I would actually ask the city council for your assistant and assistance in helping us get the word out to communities, to families that we know are in need of internet access to to help us with that. And then, again, just by way of notation, because we do get questions about charter schools, we're also looking into and working with T-Mobile to see the ways that with our current contract with T-Mobile, that we would be able to support charter schools, again, very similar to what I referenced earlier, with the ability to purchase their hotspots, not as individual schools, but as part of the collective Baltimore City schools, so that they actually can purchase the hotspots under the same terms that non-charter schools, traditional schools are benefiting from right now. Longer term, and I think I said that, that we've got the start-to-school. I probably didn't finish. The second phase that I've described is the next 18 months. And what I have said very forthrightly is that regardless of the model we're in, we know minimally for the next 18 months, there will be a dependency on very immediate access to high-quality internet in order for young people to fully participate in schooling. And so that second phase, now that we know we can begin the school year, offering internet access to all families that need it, the next phase of that is the next 18 months. And so we are working through that in ways I described. And then the third stage, which I think we've heard a lot of tonight from Councilman Cohen, Councilman Pinkett, I'm sure others that I just did not get a chance to hear earlier, we know that that third stage is the long-term strategy for Baltimore City. One effort in in this long-term need is our partnership with the Digital Harbor Foundation to really implement a mesh network pilot. We call it, or they call it, Project Waves. And what we've done is identified four school neighborhoods with the Digital Harbor Foundation. You'll see the schools here represented. And that with the pilot, what we are seeing is that 68 families will have access to internet free of cost for five years. We're working with the Project Waves team to really investigate the viability of long-term mesh network implementation. And in brief, mesh network is really expanding the internet access at schools to really extend through to some of the immediate neighborhood, which would, again, provide another low-cost option and high-leverage option for neighborhoods. But ultimately, I think, as has been already said, the question Baltimore faces is a question the nation faces. And this is the idea that we are at a pivot point when it comes to access to internet, to broadband, to Wi-Fi as a society, that we are at a point that frankly, our country has been in many times before, when we talk about bringing electricity to communities that did not have it, when we talk about wiring the entire country for telephone because it was seen as essential. I would argue, as many have already this evening, that we are currently at that point again. And so some of the long-term work is going to require continued advocacy from the city council, our city government, our state officials, our federal officials. I have been fortunate enough to interact at all three levels, and I will tell you, I think that there are people at the federal level, the state level, who and the local level who recognize the need. I think the place where we are now is, again, a similar historical pivot point that the nation has faced previously, we face again, and we now just need to mobilize around the response. And so with that, I will turn it back over to you, Councilman Cohen, and thank you again for the opportunity to address city council and the public this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Santa Lisa's. I am going to save my questions for the end. Want to start, Councilman Bullock, you want to start off?
Yes, so thank you, Chairman Cohen, and thank you, Dr. Santa Lisa's. One of the questions I have is really around, what have the communications been like between you and Comcast, and you talked about some of the things that you're working on. Essentially, have you gotten all you needed, or do you feel like there's still some gaps in communication? What do you see as happening, and what would be helpful at this point?
No, I think, well, one, I just want to give a shout out again to Chief High Cupboard, to Monique Sims, to our Comcast partners, who who we heard from earlier tonight. What I would say, Councilman, is I think the fact that we can sit down at the table together, the fact that we can kind of have forthright discussions, that the urgency for us, and and I'm sure for them as well, to make sure that our young people's education is not compromised because of access to internet, has yielded some of what we have talked about this evening. But I think what you also hear this evening is that we we all acknowledge that there's further work to be done, based on those three phases that I just described. So I, you know, with regard to to more questions, I would, you know, open up for Chief High Cupboard, if she's here, to be able to describe some of that. But overall, what I would say, sir, is that I think the role that city council is playing this evening in actually asking questions of all entities involved, and the willingness to help frankly broker and navigate, that this new terrain is really important. And I will also say that I have regular weekly meetings with major urban superintendents across the entire country. And so when we talk about looking at other cities, I will add that absolutely, there have been kind of great, you know, agreements that have been fashioned in the short term. But I will tell you, when I talk to my colleagues in the city, they would heartily recognize and agree that a long-term strategy is necessary. And so I think one of the things that that you and other council council members can continue to do is help to press in all three phases of the strategy. You know, we worked together, and we now can start school on September 8th, at least offering and doing our work to ensure that all families have an initial access, but we can't let up in our fervency and our need for leadership from all sectors, school department, Comcast, business community. I know that Don Frye has been very helpful in connecting to the larger business community, the philanthropic community, because I do agree that this is going to require a cross-functional, a cross-division and sector response. And that's why I equate it to the push for telephone access, you know, numbers of decades ago at this point. We were, we faced the same thing. If if one sector is viewed as being the answer, then frankly, we're not going to be able to deliver. It's going to have to be cross-sectional, and even in places like Philadelphia and Boston and Chicago, if you were to talk to those system heads, and not that I'm speaking from my colleagues, but I know the conversations we've had and what we have all said, is we are excited about the ability to provide this work in interim, but none of us are fooled that we have long-term solutions on the table yet. And so we can't let up on the long-term solution.
And thank you, that's very helpful. And you actually kind of led into the follow-up question I was going to ask. So you mentioned, you know, the the short term versus long term. Initially, we're talking about 18 months, but you can be thinking from a long-range view. As part of it, the other side that you mentioned was also the fundraising effort. So you mentioned the business community, the philanthropic community. How large a gap do you see, and how far do you have to go to get to where we need to be? Just realistically, where are you standing at this point?
Right. So with regard to the second stage, which I would call that 18-month band, we actually have figures on that, and I think we're probably at like another half a million to to 2 million, I believe. Chief High Cupboard will probably text me the exact number, because frankly, I get some of the phases mixed up. But but we still have a ways to go. We still have ground on that. We had projected out through the end of the year, and I think rightly got the push from some of our really concerned business folks who said, you know, to me during a GBC meeting, well, if you're saying it's 18 months, then plot out how much we need for 18 months. And, oh, sorry, so we would actually need 3 million. Good thing, this is why you have good staff, because I would have been underselling us from January through December 31st. So if we were to go an entire extra year from January 2021 through December 2021, we're looking at an additional $3 million worth of gap that we're going to have to come together to, you know, to bridge. And then when we move into, and that and that's for internet. When we move into the long-term solution, I would just respectfully say that that's where we need to get real infrastructure discussions taking place around cost of fiber. I know city council and previous mayors have really been trying to delve into that, and I think it's going to require more analysis than my education specialty would would be qualified to say, because I think that's where we get into questions of of infrastructure and other things.
Thank you so much for your work. We know it's not easy, but thank you for sustaining the fight.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Councilman Pinkett. Councilman Burnett. Wait, are you saying, am I up or?
Yep.
Oh, okay. Sorry, you've got to cut out for a second. So good to see you virtually, Dr. Santa Lisa's, and thank you for you and your team, for all you're doing, especially in the middle of pandemic. I want your job. Mine is crazy enough. But I had two questions. One around communication. I got a few calls yesterday from concerned parents who were picking up tech from a school in my district, but raised just general concerns about sort of communication out to them as far as pickup times, location, just didn't feel like they had adequate advance notice. So if you could just speak sort of broadly to the communication strategy, I'm happy to send individual details to to your team for review for that particular school. I don't want to go in the weeds there, but but just generally, there have been a lot of concerns about communication and also social distancing protocols at the pickup sites. Folks were concerned, you know, that there were long lines, people weren't, well, some people weren't making masks. And, you know, largely, just it seemed a little bit scattered. It was the the feedback I got. So can you speak broadly to just the communication to parents? Obviously, this is going to be an ongoing need and request as you continue to roll out more and more tech to students. So I guess, what have been some of the challenges that you faced so far? What are, what is the communication plan? And I'm sure you've heard the same feedback I've gotten. I guess, how is the the agency adjusting?
No, thank you, Councilman Burnett. It is absolutely a fair and on-point question. I will very forthrightly say that we learned very quickly, and in some ways unexpectedly, that our previous central distributions, when we began central distribution of devices, averaged, you know, anywhere from 200 to 400 people coming at one time per distribution day. The days where we really saw challenging conditions of the order that you've been describing, frankly, and and probably, they should not have taken us by surprise, but they did, when we were anticipating between 200 to 400 and had over 1,000 people coming centrally. We, and then if you add on to that incredibly hot and humid days during the times of central distribution, it was frankly, the convergence of a lot of less-than-ideal factors, right? So surge in pickups, that was unanticipated, and hot weather conditions, wanting to keep people cool, but keeping people cool and social distanced in North Avenue. All of that led to a day-to-day switch, where we actually pulled folks from different teams to come and assist with the distribution and assist with the social distancing and PPE reminders for folks that, to be frank, during the during the early days, it just was not there and did not happen. It also led to the shift to school-based distribution. So with regards to the communication, we had to pivot in communication. And so I could fully understand why it would be difficult for a family to follow some of that communication. And some of what made it difficult was not necessarily kind of, you know, mal-intent on the part of staff. I think it was that real conditions were changing on the ground, and as we were attempting to adjust, sometimes the word imperfectly gets out. And I think that is part of, was part of the drive, frankly, to go to school-based distribution, because we know both nationally and locally that families go first to their school when they want up-to-date information. I'll also highlight another challenge, and the other challenge is even with schools themselves. And so it's not to push it on on school leaders who have just been amazing during the pandemic and their ability to pivot, but what that also meant is the need for principals and school communities to now become the filter of information, of readiness. And because, again, we have shipments because of supply that are coming in waves and in phases, what that means is that there might be some variation or variability between schools with regard to how many devices are available when, which is why we have tried to tell families, please stay in contact with your school so that they can notify you when your school's devices are ready for pickup. So I I'm not going to certainly disregard a lot of the challenges that you rightly have heard about, and you're right, I too have heard about them. But it real, those challenges and concerns were were actually a major driver of why we changed the distribution strategy that we did.
And again, I understand definitely trying to do all of this on the fly under these circumstances. And I would just float out that if we can be helpful with that on the at the council level, that would be great as far as being able to also push out where pickup are. I know some of the schools hashtagged me on social media in my district, and I've tried to push that that stuff out as well. So if we can be useful, let me know. The other question I had was just more broadly around learning style. I know I have struggles with sort of a virtual environment. I can only imagine being a student, working virtually. Can you speak, I guess broadly, around retraining or best practices that are being pushed out to help meet young people where they are who may not learn well outside of a classroom or, you know, in isolation, I guess, of their the living room or the dining room table or whatever they're sitting at the computer? How are, what adjustments are teachers being advised to make to sort of meet children where they are?
Yes, it's a very important question. Let me also say that one of the things, based on your Let me also say that one of the things, based on your first set of comments, that I will flag for our communications team is moving forward. When we have those major announcements, we will try to loop in the city council's office so that then city council, either individually or collectively, can also have the same information to push out through your own networks, if that would be okay. But that would just be a suggestion. Second, I'll just return, absolutely, it is one of the things, you know, the idea that not all young people thrived in being in a virtual environment is one of the things that nags at me the most, is knowing that, you know, we had young people who absolutely thrived in being away from the hustle and bustle of schools and classrooms. And we had others who frankly, did not thrive, did not have positive experiences. And so a couple of things that we've done is, one, for our students with disabilities, we've really worked hard to identify additional supports that, and services that can be administered virtually. And so some of the supports like speech therapy and others that might normally, that we might not have been able to provide in the spring, that might have helped support more students. We've spent some time doing more research and more training around those. I think the other piece is some of the professional learning that teachers are engaging right now and did the last three days of school in June. And that is one, increasing teacher familiarity with the tools that are connected to our various platforms. We also made some shifts in platforms. So an example would be, we heard from early learning teachers themselves, pre-K and K teachers, that Seesaw was a much better platform for early learners than Zoom or Google Classroom. Now, we won't be able to start Seesaw initially, but we are working to get that online. And a lot of that was due to what early educators said to us about that tool's ability to engage young learners far more effectively. And then the final piece I will add, and there are other examples that I could give you, but I don't want to take up all the time, is it is also why we have been working to see how we can bring small groups of students in. Again, not full return to school, not even kind of full virtual model, but how do we prioritize those young people? And so in our in-person summer school, it was small. It was just over 200 students. We wanted to make sure we had, you know, manageable size. We had teachers and principals who volunteered to be part of that program. And one of the things that we found was that principals actually targeted young people who had not connected, young people who did not learn well in the virtual environment. And so one of the other pieces we have seen through our in-person summer school is that when you can bring small groups of students back in groups of six, seven, eight, not 15 yet, not 25 yet, but that those smaller groups, a number of those students and their families were absolutely ecstatic to be able to have that opportunity. So I think part of what we are continually monitoring for is what are the ways that for young people who we know do not connect well, that we can improve the virtual experience and also provide some small group in-person as well. So I would say that's a sampling of some of the work that we've been doing because you're absolutely right. And as a mother of three daughters, I can tell you, not all three of them adapted well to the shift to the virtual environment. And so I know firsthand the variability in student experience.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Clark.
Hi, Dr. Santa Lisa's. You are a bright, bright, a bright part, excuse me, of this meeting because you were so positive about what you've been able to do, incredibly what you've been able to do at the school system. And I just want to say thank you for that. I did come here with a mission this evening, and that was to make sure that the Somo students, Baltimore City College and other high schools in, in the system, did have three requests, not of you, but of Comcast. And as I was listening to you, I think you may have, you may have worked with Comcast to resolve some of them. I'm not sure, and I don't want to tie you up, but I'm just going to read you the three things they have asked for, for a long time of Comcast. First, we ask that Comcast permanently increase Internet Essentials upload speeds from three, what is it, megabytes to 25, and download speed from 25 to 100. Second, Internet Essentials must be free from the time of enrollment until 60 days after full restoration of school. And third, finally, it is crucial that all Xfinity Hotspot, including those least Comcast modems, be free to the public starting now until 60 days after the full restoration of school. I'm not asking you at this moment to respond, but I heard some of what you said that does respond. And I just wanted this on the record because I promised Somo's and my chairman that I would do that. And I am obedient. And the second thing I want to say is I like the idea of sending us the same alerts you're sending out to the school system family. It gives me, for example, a way to reach out to my district schools and say, well, can I help you with this? Or how, you know, how's it going? And it helps us, I think, make connections that maybe we wouldn't be able to otherwise. Thank you, Doctor.
No, thank you, Councilwoman Clark. Much appreciated.
Yeah, you're great.
Thank you. Not perfect. Yeah, we still.
No, we're not looking for perfect. We want to live in this world.
That's good. That's good.
Maybe I'm the last one that, I don't know who else is left of the council, and I don't know where our chairman went, but he would certainly earn a break.
Yes, he absolutely has. That's how hearings go.
And I'm the vice chair. Oh, so are the other council members wanting to make a comment here?
Apologies. My own internet having issues. So no one needs to feel bad tonight. Apologies.
Oh, Zeke, oh, you're back.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, for taking, taking over my internet.
The responsibility was awesome. I got to talk directly to the, yeah, the boss of all schools and now techie.
Appreciate that. Sorry about that. Councilman Pinkett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't know if I necessarily have any questions, but I did want to make a couple of statements. Well, first and foremost, I want to just commend Dr. Santa Lisa's, her team, all of the partners, especially our young people who are doing an incredible job of navigating this, you know, most difficult time. You know, words can't express how appreciative we are as a community that you're at the helm right now, you know, as we go through this and that, you know, the leadership that you all are providing as we navigate, you know, these uncertain waters. So thank you. As you said, it's not perfect, but, you know, thank you for your leadership and how we are navigating through this. I did want to make two other statements, and this, this really is probably for the listening audience. Because in, in order for this to be successful, we as a community are going to have to come together in order to support our, our children and our families. And I really want to make a plea and a call for the faith community. Oftentimes, the faith community is looking for opportunities where they can help and where they can lend. And, and not all, not all the time is that, can you come into the schoolhouse? But, but this is an opportunity where you can impact the schoolhouse. And I, and I'm challenging any pastor, if you know a pastor, whether you be, you know, in a church, a synagogue, or, you know, wherever you are pastor people, if you pastor families who have young people who are in our school system, you have an obligation to make certain that those families are connected and make certain that they have the resources that they need or connected to the resources. And so we need to do that for our families. And if you have space and you are able to provide a safe social distancing space with individuals who could possibly help our young people as navigators so that, you know, as they even engage with our teachers virtually, you need to make that space available and make people available to help our young people. We cannot afford for a couple of years from now for us to have to create a 13th grade because our young people have fallen so far behind that we've got to give them an additional year just to make the requirement. And so I'm challenging any faith leader who's listening that, as a pastor, you need to find out if your families and if your young people are connected. And if they are not, you have an obligation to help them do so. And then the, the second thing I wanted, I want to also challenge Dr. Santa Lisa's. I mean, I know as you have one eye on the immediate, I'm challenging you to have another eye on the future of our school system. If we would be honest, there are some things that we wouldn't want to return to as a Baltimore City Public School System, even if COVID-19 was not here, even if these other challenges. And so it would be a shame that after a pandemic, after this disruption, that we will return to some of the things that we know need to be changed in our school system. And not all of them are financial. Some of them are other structural things. And so my challenge to the school system is that use this disruption as a, take advantage of it to change some things that were already broken in our system and fix them so that when our kids do return from this virtual environment, they return to a, a school setting that we, we all dreamed of beyond, you know, prior to this COVID-19. So thanks, Mr. Chair. I just felt led to say that.
Dr. Santa Lisa says you want to respond?
Sure. No, and, you know, Councilman Pinkett, I think that is the right challenge. It's the appropriate challenge. I think it is one that I have really endeavored to echo even within the school system. But I think the external accountability to the community and the way that you have said it can't be stated enough. And I, I would agree. It is not as if pre-March 15th, everything was where it needed to be in the school system. I also think that part of what I have tried to message more broadly, and I think if we take a look above the waters of turbulence of this pandemic right now, what I see on the landscape, and I have said to my team in many a meeting, is I actually have peeked my head above the water and looked at the landscape. And I would go so far as to say this is a new arena and context in which public education is on trial. And I don't mean only from a funding perspective. I mean, from a very fundamental question that families across our city and frankly, across our nation have been asking. And that is, to what extent have schools been successful in educating all children? And the visibility that families have now into the process, I think is some of, some of the, the most pressure-pointed urgency that a lot of our school leaders feel in talking to them. They know that families right now, when every family gets a laptop, because that's what we're pushing for, that is going to mean and has meant frankly, unprecedented visibility into what that learning process looks like. And if we don't fully account for that in what we are doing now, then we are going to miss this moment. And, and I would argue, even though, you know, some folks think, might, might think it's overly dramatic, I do think we're at a pivot point nationally and locally in public education. And I think we have to prove in a new way that we are capable, as well as committed, to educating all children well. And I, I have quoted in two opening sessions for the return to school, a quote by Tanji Reed Marshall, which I am more than happy to forward to the city council. And one of the things that, that she talks about, that Dr. Marshall talks about is the fact that we have to be careful that in our effort to meet the social emotional needs of young people during this, to care for them in very tangible ways like food and, and internet access, that we don't, we don't also step away from the charge to, to fully educate these same young people. Because if we do, what's going to happen is young people that were already undereducated and undertaut prior to the crisis will be the ones whom, if you look at the McKinsey study that they've been doing on projected learning loss, are most vulnerable to now be anywhere from 12 to 14 months behind. And so I agree with you. It is part of what we are working towards that there's been new flexibilities. We have, for example, high school students who, because of the way seat time is organized and mandated prior to the pandemic, were not checking in. And if you talk to some of our AOP principals, they will tell you with the laptop and connectivity, some of those kids that were frankly, very disconnected are now more, more connected because they have more flexibility in how they engage their learning. And so it is going to require us to have a renewed commitment. So I think you are issuing the right challenge. I would say it is one that I take forthrightly because like I said, I, I am looking at the landscape and I actually don't think it's dramatic. And to the contrary, actually, I am hearing from black and brown parents and watching the narrative from low-income communities and under-resourced communities. And while their pods may look different, and while their distance learning might look different, they are having conversations about how their children need to be educated and what they are or not getting that looks very different than what it was six months ago. And so I want to let you know, sir, I am not confused. And, and I, unlike a lot of folks who thinks this, who think this is, this is just a conversation happening in high-income communities, I am not fooled because there are whole groups of black and brown families in this city and frankly, across the nation that are waiting to see. And what they are saying is, public education, public schools, if you can't meet this challenge, let us know because we will, we will found our own alternatives to a system that has not served our children well. So I, I only say that so that you know, right? That is the urgency I feel and, and my charge has been, we are a district of both and that I am not going to default to this idea that with an hour of teaching a day, right? And just asking kids if they're okay, that that is somehow enough. And that our kids are often placed with either-or choices. Either you get somebody caring about you and checking in on you, or you get high-quality teaching. And what I've been saying is that we are a both-and district, that we should not be forcing families or young people to make a decision of either-or when we all know that there are some people's children who it's never a question of either-or. It's a question of both and, and how are you going to do both? Care for my child, attend to those needs, and make sure that they are educated. So I only went on that to say, it's the right question. Feel free to ask me every time you see me because that actually is the question. And like I said, we, we, if we don't see it as the question, then I would say we have folks, and I'm not trying to be political, but I'm going to say it anyway. We are going to find a public school system that looks radically different in that. People are going to make other choices. They, they are, they are going to find out in this virtual space that there are other choices. And I'm not talking charter. They are going to find other ways that there are homeschool networks. They are going to find other ways that there are homeschool networks of single mothers of color that are sprouting up daily as they figure out together how to get their children what we have not been able to give them. So I, and I, and my people will tell you, I tell them, don't get it twisted. Don't, don't get up in your frame of the world of who has agency and who does not because we're about to find out who really has agency. When they say, thank you, not working for me, I'm backing out of this and I'm going to do something different for my children. And that's happening in every zip code. So that's my speech. Sorry about that. I figured if you were gonna preach, I might as well too.
Thank you both Pastor Pinkett and Pastor Santa Lises. Appreciate the spirit and, you know, just actually want to pick up on that point of sort of the need for us to be all in. Dr. S, you compared it to, um, uh, I, I compared it to a rural electrification. You compared it to the telephone, just that sense of urgency that the internet being the next frontier, the next public utility. Clearly, the pandemic has only heightened and exacerbated the need for folks across race, socioeconomic spectra and so on to be online. So I just want to be clear, um, I know that you have been, because I've seen it myself. And again, I want to shout out Tina Heike Hubbard, who I think has been extraordinary in device deployment. Uh, I know that you all have closed the gap in this first part of the year heading toward, uh, December 31st. I do want to make clear though, after that, we still have an outstanding need when it comes to internet access moving forward. Is that right?
Yes, that is right, Councilman, particularly moving forward. We, we absolutely do.
Okay, so we still need to close the gap for the remainder of this incoming school year, which will start directly after Labor Day.
Right, so the gap, the $3 million quote the chief Heike Hubbard forwarded to me would be the gap that would begin January 2021 and extend through December 2021. So we have coverage and we're thankful for that, um, through the end of the year. But now the conversations and the work, um, have to really coalesce around that 12-month period, that additional 12-month period.
Right. And so assuming that, uh, this pandemic is not going anywhere. Um, you know, whoever willing, we have some sort of vaccine, uh, soon, but probably not. We, we will probably have, um, some, if not many, if not all families that will continue to have to learn in the virtual space. Um, knowing the importance of that piece, making sure this entire year is covered so that for the families like mine, um, who are being very, very cautious, uh, throughout this pandemic and not wanting to, my daughter's too young to be in school, but if she were in school, um, she would be going online, are not wanting to have children, um, exposed at all. Uh, just want to make sure when we think about that last piece to cover the rest of the school year, um, what, if, if we do not come up with that money, is your assumption that people's internet, our young people, our families, their, our children's internet would be turned off?
So, a- and all I can go by, um, because, you know, again, we're working with our Comcast colleagues. We're partnering with them. Um, but yes, from a kind of bare tax minimum, you know, kind of business bottom line approach, I, I'm assuming eventually if bills don't get paid, then you don't get service. So operating with that assumption, what I can say is we, um, we have secured the funds to cover the cost through December of this year. To extend that service would require additional funds to do so. Yes. But again, that's
So, so one way or the other, we have got to get this figured out by, um, I mean, really much sooner than December 31st, um, to, to give our students and families the certainty that they need, um, to be able to, uh, just know that they can stay online.
That's right. And that would, the same would be true for our T-Mobile hotspots as well. So if you were to take everything collectively, so it is Comcast and it is T-Mobile, that, that's, and that's why I said even for the T-Mobile hotspots, we are going to have to, um, work through what's going to happen past January. And I, but to your point, your fundamental point, I absolutely do agree that there is nothing regardless of, you know, what limited amount or full amount of, of in-person we might be able to do either now or over the next 18 months. I, I don't foresee any scenario based on the fact that the epidemiologists I talked to back in February, when this thing were breaking, I'm sorry, when this thing was breaking first, um, told me, I won't quote who the epidemiologist and public health person was, but they said to me, yeah, maybe this time next year, you might be able to think about going back. And that would be March 2021. And that was before any of the response or the spread. Um, and so what that says to me is that at the very best, right? We are going to have to have some form of remote learning capability if we are going to guarantee all young people and families have access to, um, to educational learning experiences. That, that's what we're going to need that. And so because of that, so like even if we do bring back small groups, we're not going to be able to bring back everybody. Um, even if in March, we can go to hybrid, we're still going to be hybrid, right? And hybrid by definition means you're going to have to have a combination. And then to your point, if we can't control spread or there are other surges, we're going to have to be able to go back entirely virtual, you know, turning on a dime. So even in the best, most promising circumstances with, for the foreseeable future, um, I, I can't imagine a scenario within the next 18 months where a, a young person's access to the internet is not going to be an integral part of what their schooling options are. That I just don't foresee, even in the best of circumstances.
Yeah, and I would just say that despite what we heard of, out of Annapolis today, that putting the public health and the health of our students, families and educators first, I think is critically important. So I think, um, again, regardless of what came out of today's press conference, I think city schools made the right decision to start this year all virtual. Uh, I think that was the best decision for the health of our children. I shudder to think what would happen, especially in some of the buildings that we have in Baltimore, if we had adults and young people congregating together in any form right now. And in watching some of your sister districts across the country that are considering, um, going back or doing some form of hybrid, uh, again, I just think we are in a global pandemic. Prioritizing people's health was the right call. And so incumbent on us, incumbent on Comcast and incumbent on every single member of this community to figure this out so that our kids can get the education, the public education that they are, uh, more than entitled to, that they deserve.
Yeah. I, I, and again, I, I don't, I don't have any agree, uh, disagreement. I, I do think, um, that, again, regardless of the form, regardless of the shifts and kind of what people think about what level of engagement there needs to be. The, the reality is even in districts, um, with colleagues in places like Texas and Florida and Georgia that have had fuller openings, um, they're saying the same thing. Like, and, and that is the bottom line, which is the theme, you know, of, of what, um, you know, chairman, that, you know, this, uh, you know, what, what you've called this evening. And that is, um, the, the need for internet access is going to be with us for a long time. And one of the things we've committed to from the beginning is that families deserve a choice. Um, families deserve to have, um, that option. And there are families who, again, this summer, even with, you know, knew what the state of their children was. Um, and I can say as a mother of three, I had three very different, um, experiences. And so we are, um, we, we were able to learn, um, from teachers and families how to have some small groups will continue to do work around that. Um, and at the same time, regardless, we're still going to need internet. So the discussions today or, or any day, um, like I said, even colleagues of mine in Florida will tell you, you still need internet access, if nothing else, because families are going to need a choice regardless. And so even in those situations, and when you close down a school, right? And, and again, I'm just saying, if you look internationally, very similarly there. Um, and I think we can all agree, no matter where we are, that internet access is essential for the foreseeable future.
Yep. Should absolutely be thought of as a public utility, not just through this pandemic, but moving forward.
Agreed.
Great. Uh, so if there are no further questions from colleagues, uh, to Dr. Sanalise, um, the last thing I would mention is again, I know you mentioned, um, some of the support that you all have provided additional to the charter schools, um, knowing some of the just procurement challenges that exist along the pipeline, uh, for major districts and especially for charters, um, as well. Uh, my hope, expectation, belief, need is that every single child, regardless, traditional, public charter, um, every single kid in BCPSS does have what they need to learn come the start of the school year. And I know that's what you believe as well. Uh, so just want to make sure for our charters that, um, we're thinking about them too and providing all the support they need to be ready to go come the first day of school.
Yes, and tha- and that was part of why I deliberately wanted to, to reference, um, charters throughout the presentation um, so that folks knew that. We knew that at, at some point, um, you know, even with the financial flexibility, right? Of, of being able to give them their portion of the dollars, financial flexibility doesn't mean anything if you can't actually access what you need. So it's part of, um, why we began that work to incorporate, um, charter orders with some of our own. Um, it's why we're, we're trying to negotiate, um, a similar rate with T-Mobile, um, that, you know, for charters that, that want those hotspots as well. So, um, we have, uh, I, I think come, come a long way on that one. But again, it was in the moment and when we realized when charters flagged for us that the supply chain was blocked, um, and through no fault of their own, then, you know, that's the time where to your point, um, we really are all one district. And even though the funding might flow differently, um, you know, Baltimore City School Students and Charter Schools are still Baltimore City School Students. And so that's why we've been working, um, to help resolve those issues as well.
Appreciate that. And I know that when we passed that bill on the 3 million for the digital devices, you know, that was of course important to us as well is that, you know, every single student, um, charter, traditional, uh, you know, get access. Um, I know that that is how that money flowed, so I appreciate that. Uh, again, thank you, Dr. Sanalise. Uh, appreciate your time this evening and your leadership and your continued partnership as we seek to close the gap for this year, um, and then into the future. Um, I really appreciate you being with us.
Thank you. Thank you, Council, Councilman, as well as the full city council just for your continued on-the-ground, um, work, uh, in this area as well. Um, there's no way we could have done it without you, without the advocates, um, and clearly with, um, the philanthropic and business community, um, joining in as well. But want to thank you and city council for your continued focus, um, and attention on this, on this issue. Much appreciated.
Absolutely. All right. Thank you so much. Uh, let's now turn it over to our teachers uh, who in so many ways have just been incredible, um, throughout this, having to pivot to online learning, in some cases, having to get their own children onto online learning, uh, while still teaching 30-plus of other people's children. Um, and then the advocacy specifically from the Baltimore Teachers Union, really from educators, probably, has been extraordinary. Uh, so again, want to thank our teachers and want to welcome right now Natasha Escobar, who is an educator at Baltimore City College.
Hello, everybody. So I'm going to go ahead and read some remarks I prepared. Hello, my name is Natasha Escobar. I'm an educator here in Baltimore City where I've taught Spanish for nine years. I'm also the Executive Chair of Baltimoreans for Educational Equity. I want to start by saying thank you, Dr. Sanalise, for sharing tonight and thank you for your hard work and steadfast commitment to help close the digital divide for our students. My years as an educator could not have prepared me for the barriers that our students would face this spring. It was really crisis teaching. My peers and I stressed over how to maintain students' learning and get them to grow academically. Fellow teachers struggled balancing their responsibilities as parents while also working to ensure their students didn't fall behind. Colleagues spent hours restructuring their lesson plans, trying to figure out how to translate their teaching to speak to all learning styles. Despite their best efforts, students didn't come to class consistently, not because they didn't want to, but because they didn't have a device or they had inadequate internet access. When schools closed, students, educators, community members and elected officials banded together to close the gap in technology by securing $3 million from the youth fund to provide students with Chromebooks. But we quickly realized securing technology was not the only barrier to overcome. Let me tell you a little bit about what I saw this spring. I saw kids unable to participate in live sessions because they kept getting kicked off the internet. I had students who got frustrated during class due to the internet freezing and lagging. I had students who had to coordinate the use of the internet with their parents, siblings and other family members because the bandwidth was not enough for all of them to be online at the same time. I had students contact me personally because their internet had been cut off or they were concerned about being disconnected for financial reasons. Our students are trying hard to get online. They want to learn, they miss their peers, and they don't want to fall even further behind. However, if our kids can't connect, they can't show up and they don't have access to their constitutional right to an education. What we found is that Comcast Internet Essentials speeds are not enough. Despite the global pandemic and being resource strapped, city schools continues to be innovative and dedicated in their efforts to close the digital divide. Our city council expeditiously moved money to ensure kids' access to devices. Teachers, families and students have been leading advocacy efforts all while preparing for an unprecedented start to the new year. We are all in and we need Comcast to be all in too. Comcast says their Internet Essentials program provides sufficient speeds, but speed tests show that actual speeds are slower than what is advertised. Comcast Internet Essential Program offers upload speeds of 25 megabits per second and download speeds of 3 megabits per second. Last semester, my department used Google Meet and Google Meet requires participants in all situations to meet a 3.2 megabits per second bandwidth requirement. 3.2 megabits is notably per second is notably above Internet Essentials 3 megabits per second download speed. Students cannot then rely on the minimum broadband speed to attend class if it is held on Google Meet. Right now, teachers are starting pre-service training and preparing to meet students on September 8th. Baltimore City Public Schools has shown its commitment to closing the technological gap through their procurement and distribution of devices. But if our kids don't have adequate internet speeds, they can't show up. If they can't show up, virtual learning is not going to work and the opportunity gap for our most promising students continues to grow. Teachers can't solve for the internet. So I'm asking Comcast, will you do what is right and meet someone's demands, including permanently increasing the minimum upload and download speeds for your Internet Essentials program? Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you so much. Appreciate your testimony and your leadership as well. Um, re- really, really, really appreciate it, Natasha. Damonte Brown was not able to join us tonight from the Baltimore Teachers Union, but, um, instead Franca Mueller-Paz is going to speak on behalf of the BTU. Welcome Franca.
Hi, can I speak to me?
Yes.
Excellent. So hello, everyone. Thank you, students, teachers, advocates, Dr. Santa Lises, members of the Education and Youth Committee and President Scott for taking time this evening to fight for our students to be educated this fall. My name is Franca Mueller-Paz and I am a teacher with Baltimore City Schools and a building representative of the Baltimore Teachers Union. Our teachers' union, the city council, advocates, parents and students are tired of everyone doing their part to ensure that our kids have doing their part to ensure that our kids have fair access to their education, while Comcast Xfinity continues to sit back and enjoy record-breaking numbers of new customers and profit earnings from this global crisis. As we saw in Dr. Santalisis' presentation, our school system has worked hard to get our kids online. Despite starved financial resources, our schools have used their limited funds to purchase thousands of devices and hotspots for our kids. Every individual school was also instructed to give their students any device that wasn't nailed down to the floor. And Somos' students and educators and advocates also won $3 million from City Hall. So thank you, uh, President Scott, the council, and also Mayor Jack Young, uh, $3 million to help close the divide. Even local foundations, like the Fund for Educational Excellence, who raised over $100,000 from individuals and foundations, have been working hard to close this divide and get our kids online. But that leaves us with one more so-called partner, Comcast. Christie Fox, Comcast Executive of Corporate Communications, shared the following statement. She said that solving a problem as vast and complex as the digital divide requires collaboration across the city with the school district, elected officials, nonprofit community partners, and other private sector companies, so everyone is a part of the solution. But where has Comcast been during this crisis? During COVID, Comcast Internet Division had its best second quarter increase in new-paying customers in 13 years. And that doesn't even incre- include, uh, the Internet Essentials customers. They've been raking in revenue, forecasted $14.6 billion with earnings of $6 billion. And now they want to make even more money off the backs of our kids in schools by demanding $650,000 to not disconnect 7,000 families from their inadequate internet service. So that leaves me with some thoughts, which were comments that were made during the presentation by Comcast. First, I'll start with speeds. Comcast would like to be applauded because they increased their speeds during the COVID crisis. But what they didn't say is that when they increased their speeds to the bare minimum qualifying number of the FCC, that number has existed for five years. It was established in 2015. So where has Comcast been in those five years? And why did it take a global pandemic for them to give people the speeds that they deserve? And don't we think then after five years, the speeds that are required for people across our city may have increased? We also know that students, educators, and advocates have repeatedly shared directly with Comcast that we can't get our families online, especially not ones with multiple siblings or where students and parents need to be using video, video conferences. Yet Comcast has repeatedly lied to us and told us that they have evidence that these speeds could supposedly sustain three Zoom calls and four Skype calls. But when we ask for Comcast to provide evidence about this, and they tell us it exists, they ignore our repeated request. It's been months. Where is the information and where is the evidence of these so-called abilities, uh, of these speeds? They also pushed back when, uh, uh, Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark brought up their near monopoly. They say they don't have a near monopoly. So why can't the vice president, uh, a vice president of Comcast tell us what percent of internet service is provided by Comcast in Baltimore? Because I think it is so high that any rational person would see that Comcast does indeed have a near monopoly in our city. They also deny, uh, digital redlining in our city. But they use very careful language, right? Comcast says they provide to every neighborhood. But does every neighborhood mean every house? It sure doesn't seem that way from the people we've been talking to. From our community efforts in South Baltimore, we know that service is limited in neighborhoods like Charles, uh, like Cherry Hill. And an educator in Baltimore told us that when they called Comcast, they were informed that Comcast does not serve their neighborhood or their block in Soundtown Winchester. She said, "The rep told me that they couldn't serve my house at that service in my neighborhood depends on the side of the street in the house you're on." So clearly, it is not a complete map and complete access to everyone in Baltimore City. They also mentioned partnerships. Mr. Banks from Comcast tells us that they have partners with schools in Chicago, Philadelphia, and Atlanta. But I'm curious to hear, what is the definition of partnership for Comcast? Because from what I see, Comcast goes to underfunded school systems, which are majority black and brown. Then they twist the arm of these school systems until they allow themselves to be extorted by this multinational, multi-billion company to the tune of hundreds of thousands or millions of dollars. This is not a partnership. This is Comcast doing business as usual. And sometimes, while they can convince neighboring foundations to add in money to paying off these costs, at the end of the day, the money all goes back to Comcast. If we do not solve this problem, we face an educational deficit that will affect our nation's children for years to come. And you can hear it in the voice of our CEO. She is deeply concerned about what is going to happen to our children if we don't solve this problem. Before school starts, Comcast needs to provide faster speeds. They need to open up their hotspots, and they need to provide free Internetal- Internet Essentials service from the time of enrollment until 60 days after the full restoration of school. Today, it's past time Comcast starts behaving like the responsible corporation they claim to be in their websites and on their posts and in their media and in news articles. And as their Executive of Corporate Commution- Communication said, it's time that they, quote, "become a part of the solution." Thank you.
Apologies, still having internet challenges over here. Um, thank you, Ms. Mueller Paz. Very much appreciate your leadership, um, and your work as a longtime educator in our city. All right. Next, we are going to hear from some of the other folks in the tech world in, in Baltimore. Uh, we know that, uh, Project Waves has been a contributor to closing the digital divide, that they are helping to connect students. I got the great pleasure of going to see the work, um, in South Baltimore and Westport. Um, so really excited to welcome Adam Boumadd.
Awesome. Appreciate it, Councilman. Um, hello, everyone. Uh, my name is Adam Boumadd. Uh, I am a first-generation Moroccan-American, born and raised in Baltimore. I am also the founder and director of Project Waves, a community-based wireless internet service provider focused on providing internet access to residents across Baltimore City. Mission of Waves is simple, to make the internet more ubiquitous and accessible to all. Guided by that belief, since May of this year, in partnership with the Able Foundation and Baltimore City Public Schools, Waves has connected 68 households in Baltimore to free, secure, in-home, high-speed internet that allows K through, uh, K through 12 students to access virtual learning environments at speeds compatible with the platforms deployed by our partners. Our work is an artistic expression of the world we envision, one we advocate for, where the internet is available and accessible to all, regardless of socioeconomic status, paired with our on-the-ground effort to deliver empathetic experiences to residents across Baltimore. Waves' service differentiates itself from incumbents across Baltimore. Although the FCC defines high-speed broadband as a minimum of 25 megs down, 3 up, we understand the limitations of that definition, particularly here in Baltimore, where residents are bound by the terms of a franchise agreement. Under agreements like those spelled out by Comcast Internet Essentials Program, customers can expect to receive a maximum of 25 down, 3 up. In a city like Baltimore, where our franchise holder provides no data about quality of service, and where students struggle to remain present in virtual classrooms due to poor connectivity, we must continue to hold providers like Comcast to a higher level of accountability. Project Waves partnered with city schools to deploy a network that would support the needs of our city, particularly the K through 12 students that depend on us. We've done more than that. We've maintained accountability as we've connected residents to our network. We've also provisioned and deployed 73 residential public Wi-Fi hotspots, which allow neighboring residents to connect to our service at no cost, a service which Comcast is capable of, but refuses to at, to, uh, allocate in perpetuity. Perhaps most importantly, our team consists of individuals who live in the communities we serve. Through our collaboration with workforce development organizations like Empower, we've been able to hire 16 employees who serve our disconnected communities empathetically because they understand what it's like to experience life on the wrong side of the digital divide. Over the next several months, Waves is committed to expanding in-home wireless broadband access across Baltimore. As a fiscally-sponsored nonprofit organization, our mission is clear, and sustainable access to the internet is a human right. It's time to call incumbents and hold them to account for their role in making access more available for all. And to that point, Comcast states that they care. Comcast cares. However, during the most critical moment in history, as we collectively experience a public health emergency, Comcast has proven at every opportunity that they value profit over the safety of vulnerable communities. Internet access is a vital component of the modern educational system. During quarter two of 2020, Comcast added a record 323,000 internet subscribers. This figure does not reflect the 600,000 internet subscribers added by Comcast in quarter two. During the pandemic, Comcast continues to profit greatly. Comcast, in this moment, has the capacity to finally live up to its, to its slogan and provide free, empathetic access to Baltimore residents and to ensure that they are not disconnected for the duration of the pandemic. Internet access, as defined by the United Nations, is a human right. The internet is a human right. It's never been more evident that in this time of pandemic panic, that internet access is a human right and is as essential as electricity and running water. It is a utility. The internet facilitates access to information and an extension of our physical spaces like libraries and allows for us to have the ability to organize in this critical moment. This issue of connectivity is not new. In a city where over a third of Baltimore residents are lacking internet connectivity, it is evident that incumbent providers like Comcast have not done a sufficient job in ensuring families have an accessible path forward to connectivity in the 21st century. It is 2020. We are 20 years into the 21st century. It has been 20 years. Basic infrastructure like the internet is still lacking. Despite what the Trump FCC believes, the internet is a utility. Following this point, I have a few questions. Comcast, what are your values? How will you be remembered in this moment? Will you continue to turn your backs on families who need access the most? Tonight, I call on you, Comcast, in the spirit of transparency, to make your infrastructure maps public and to prove that you are truly available across Baltimore City, including in the community citing the greatest need for connectivity, including Soundtown Winchester, Cherry Hill, Upton, Greenmount East, and Southern Park Heights. I also call on you to make your services more accessible. As availability does not mean accessibility in terms of pricing, user experience both in terms of speeds and in terms of signing up, as well as the ability to maintain this service throughout the pandemic, as well as thereafter. As an added point, when residents do speed tests, oftentimes, the speeds they're paying for are not reflective of the service they are paying for. Tonight, we are also calling on Comcast to release a report detailing the average speeds families are experiencing, as well as the quality of service metrics on the network, including the size of the pipe being provided to communities looking to be serviced, also known as the oversubscription ratio for families. This information will be helpful to understand more broadly the service Comcast provides in Baltimore. And to the Comcast rep that spoke earlier, I will add that holding an educational institution hostage and for ransom is not working with the community. Instead, it is burdening an already underfunded system, doing everything it can for its students, especially during a pandemic. I thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Adam. And again, thank you for your work, um, with the mesh network. Uh, really, really impressed by what I saw over in Westport and hope to see it expand throughout our city. Um, similarly, Jonathan Moore and Rowdy Orbit have been doing some really exceptional work, um, expanding hotspots. Uh, don't know if folks saw, but there was a great piece on NBC News about some of their work, um, I believe in Cherry Hill, uh, just recently in partnership with Elevate. Um, so really excited to welcome Jonathan Moore.
Thank you for having me, Councilman. I really appreciate it. Thank you all for being here this evening. Um, what we're relying on is not working, and it hasn't been working. You've been doing this work long enough, from net neutrality, where the language changes from net neutrality to the digital divide, to now the Brookings Institute classifies it or labels it as digital poverty. It's relying on a single provider, a majority of single provider, leads, is leads to a lot of disparity, and it's just not working in this city. And as we look at Baltimore City and we talk about the black butterfly, it's, people are hurting. People are sad. People are left out. And when you're putting high spots and home connectivity at low-cost, high-speed internet, it gives people an ounce of hope, but allows them to be inclusive and included in the new, new economy that's growing forward, but also allows them to skill up. When you're putting in Wi-Fi infrastructure in communities, first thing you see a crying parent. You, you see relief on their face. You see them sitting down with their child, doing homework together, either indoors or outdoors. This has a profound effect on giving people hope in areas where there is no hope. What needs to happen is reducing our addiction on a single provider in order to free up the community. We need to move into action. And to go back to Councilman Pinkett, uh, and Dr. Santalisis, people are moving into agency because they see the gap that they're being left behind, and they're being left behind traditionally in a lot of these communities. So what they're starting to do is to get together. You have community-based organizations with space-based organizations coming together to figure out opportunities to really look into decreasing the educational gap and disparities by coming together and turning space into usable space in the community and having groups of kids social distance, so that way they can bring in retired educators to really fill that gap. And so on a grassroots level, this is happening, and it's happening because it needs to get done. So what I would love for it to do is, one, we need to move to, we need to build neighborhood by neighborhood, while we're figuring out what the larger strategy is. And a larger strategy should not be inclusive of just one single provider, because we recycle the same conversation over and over and over again. And at times, it feels like a Mad Lib conversation, but with just new language based on disparity at hand. And moving forward, I just hope, and I pray, and where I can look into a kid's eye and see joy, and this is just something that they do, they'll be able to connect to high-speed internet without having to worry, not having to pay Peter, taking Peter to pay Paul for service, and not live across the wrong street because Comcast doesn't service that side of the road. To me, that's despicable. To me, that's frightening. To me, we're, we're perpetually keeping these communities on a hamster wheel. And as we talk about equality as a city, we have to move forward pretty quickly because the gap exists. And we focus ourselves on exceptionalism. Being a startup founder myself, uh, founder and CEO of Rowdy Orbit, has been a startup founder in this city since 2002, 2003. There's always been hope and pride. And I think that as a city, we need to focus on localization of the startup culture in this city. Uh, take, take the funds away from the providers that are not doing the job that they say they would do. And as a city, we need to set our own standards for where connectivity is, instead of relying on FCC guidelines. Because if we just do the basics, we get piss-poor results, and it's shown time and time again. So I'd like for us to really focus on and defining what connectivity means for Baltimore City and not worry about the FCC, not worry about the governor, not worry about whatever administration that's in charge. We need to set the tone. We need to move forward, and we need to do better for our people. We need to do better for our community. Thank you for your time, and I really, really appreciate it. Thank you for your time, and I really, really appreciate it.
Amen, and thank you, particularly as a former teacher from Santan Winchester. Appreciate what you all are doing out there. Could not agree more with just the incredible moral imperative that is getting children and families connected through the internet.
Absolutely, and it's more than just moral. It's really putting this infrastructure in place where community-based organizations can become a better partner with the city to properly deploy resources. And the one thing that we have not asked of Comcast is now that they own the pipes, what type of data are they collecting? And what percentage of that data equals to the profit margin that is in this city in Baltimore? Because they own the pipes, but they also own the devices where you can speak into as far as your recorder. And so what type of information are they collecting? What type of data sets are they building? And how are they profiting from this? And who are the buyers? Is it DoD or Homeland Security? And as a part of their business model, are they into getting into the home and capital surveillance?
Again, thank you, Mr. Moore.
Thank you.
All right. Again, another really prominent person in our tech world, Andrew Coy of the Digital Harbor Foundation. DHF played a big role this summer in supporting our students in the Youth Works Program. So we appreciate that as well as your ongoing work. Mr. Coy.
Thank you, Councilmember Cohen, and thank you to the committee and to all the speakers that have spoken. You know, I think there's a number of points that are just really critical that have been brought up, you know, and I really appreciate Mr. Kane's early remarks about the role of integrity and the importance of that. I'm getting a little bit of feedback noise. I don't know if others are as well. The, so the question that I really want to pose to you all, council members on this committee, is, you know, one around, or what I want to speak to is what you need in order to do your role in this conversation. The historic conversation that is happening here, I think, is incredibly important. And it hinges on the shifting of the internet from a luxury to a utility. And in that shift from a luxury to utility, it's important to move from marketing conversations to one about performance conversations. You know, and unfortunately, even in this conversation here this evening, you know, when asked about things like speeds, you know, it has been frequently the case that Comcast responded by pointing to product offerings, not performance data. And additionally, when the conversations with the students occurred, you know, as you heard, Comcast said they heard those requests, but all the students received in response was a marketing response that even borderline on gaslighting, you know, being told that your internet was fast enough and that what you experienced, you didn't experience. In addition, you know, the conversation that's been had around partner agreements is, you know, is a partner agreement in which City Schools has been advertising for free to get lots of people to sign up for Comcast, only to then be told that those families are going to be shut off from the internet if they don't pay for them now. And this all in the midst of a pandemic, and as has been highlighted by the other speakers, by Frank Amirocog and others, while there's record profits being made. You know, and, you know, just to give an example of something that, you know, just feels to me sort of analogous is offering two months of free internet and saying that that is bridging the digital divide is the equivalent of Costco saying that the free samplers that they give is, you know, solving food hunger issues. Or Netflix saying that, you know, a month free of Netflix is solving the video gap that we have, right? Like, it's a marketing, not a performance measure. And I just want to highlight that because, you know, as we look at this and as we talk about everyone coming around the table, if the money is all flowing in one direction, then it's not all equal partners at the table. You know, and that is really what I want you all to understand is the franchise agreement that you all have signed with Comcast gives Comcast an enormous benefit of the utility right-of-way access points. And it's capped at what percentage the city can receive in benefit for that. You know, FCC mandates what that cap is, and it can't go above it. So there's limitations around that. But I just wanted to underscore that Baltimore City has given Comcast a tremendous asset in the right-of-way access points all across this country to run all of their internet infrastructure. And while the franchise agreement itself speaks directly to cable TV, it is the same exact lines that are connecting internet access. They're getting a free ride on that infrastructure that they are getting that access to. And so I think it's appropriate and important for you all, the council, the committee, to ask the question of what should we be asking in exchange for that from a reporting and transparency perspective? It is my firm belief that we need to have a report card from all internet service providers, and there are more than one, right, that provide different types. But I do think it is incredibly relevant to talk about a report card. And I think the city council could be an appropriate vehicle to request this data. And putting the data into an open data portal with, you know, with Baltimore City Government may be a good place to provide that information. And I think this information should be reported on at the community statistical area level. If you're familiar with the Baltimore Neighborhood Indicators Alliance from the Jacob Franks Institute at the University of Baltimore, and Sema Iron Team there has done a fantastic job of collecting a whole wide range of data points that speak to the availability of different, you know, services or of experiences and life expectancy, health factors all across the city. The data, though, that is about internet is old, is outdated, and is inevitably so because of the way in which it is collected. We need more accurate, up-to-date information, not just about a binary of is there internet available and do people have it, but about speeds. We need information about data transfer, network throughput, total upload speed amounts, network throughput in terms of total downloads. You've heard about those referenced here. We need information about speed and latency, speed of data, the average download speeds, speed of data in terms of average upload and average latency. We need information about the number of households and devices with primary connections that exist. We also need data about capacity building. What is being done by the internet service providers, all of them, to build additional capacity and for families to be connected? We also need data about cost, the average costs for individual households and the total cost for the infrastructure. I believe a report card that holds all internet service providers accountable for what they're providing in this utility mindset will give you the information, the data that you need to be able to make clear policy decisions and to be able to look and say, although it is stated in marketing terms that it is available in all these places, this is what it's actually getting there. And if the neighborhoods, you know, that you look at the maps of interaccess and it mirrors exactly the maps that you can imagine for all sorts of other factors, there's a black butterfly and a white owl, and that is unacceptable. And we need to, as a community, collectively rise up and say, we are going to solve the digital divide here in this moment with significant investments, but we're going to do so in a way that has accountability for that providing. So I urge you to think about what mechanisms you have to formally request data and to publish that data in a public way that's anonymized, not individual-level data, but community statistical area data that then can help policymaking occur and support City Schools and their actions and other departments across the city as this is an ongoing need that will, that my hope is will not exist in the future. But without clear action and clear data about it, unfortunately, will likely persist in pernicious ways. And so I submit that challenge and that request to you all and be happy to speak more about that if there are questions.
Thank you so much, Mr. Coy. Appreciate your testimony and your leadership in this field. All right, we are going on hour three of this hearing. I think it's really important, and I know that so many people throughout Baltimore that have tuned in tonight just fundamentally believe that access to the internet must become a public utility, as has been stated throughout, that data like Mr. Coy said is critical and that we all have a role to play. Now turning over to our business community, which clearly has a stake in this conversation. Mr. Donald Frye is the president of the Greater Baltimore Committee. Thank you for being with us tonight, sir, and thanks for hanging on.
My pleasure, Mr. Chairman, and members of the committee. Thank you for the opportunity to talk to you. First of all, I certainly appreciate the committee's interest and the highlighting that you're providing to this issue. Your commitment to the youth of our city is very commendable. I think it's something that we're all very concerned about. Broadband internet access is essential. It is necessary to our residents throughout the city irrespective of socioeconomic conditions. The internet, and it's important not only for virtual learning of our young people, for our young people who can't afford to be left behind or to be disadvantaged in their learning process, but as Councilman Pinkett mentioned earlier, it's also very important these days for job opportunities and work, and obviously, as we know, especially with respect to telework that many people are experiencing today. The business community is very supportive of efforts to ensure that all students across the city have devices and access to the internet. We commend Dr. Santelisis and the school system for the efforts that they made to secure Chromebooks and secure access at the end of the school year. That was certainly something that was not anticipated and something that they had to pivot and really bring some changes and obviously commend the teachers for what they had to do to switch to a virtual learning perspective as well. I'm pleased to say that many businesses actually participated financially in some of that effort by to secure devices and access at the end of the spring semester. The GBC has been engaged in discussions with Dr. Santelisis. You heard her reference it earlier. In fact, we held a special board of directors meeting in mid-August to talk about the challenges that she was confronting, both in making sure that the students had access, devices and access for the school year starting on September 8th. At that time, she laid out to us very clearly the three phases that she has discussed, one being obviously the first phase, which was this first semester of school, second and more intermediate, 18 months, which is now to the end of December of 2021, and then a long-term plan. That's something that we asked her that specifically. We, as she indicated earlier tonight, she, the business community asked her, our board asked her, what is the number that we're looking for? What is the real need that are there? And she referenced, of course, to you that that 18-month period of currently now or September, I guess it would be August until December of next year was the $3 million number. And we even asked her to look further out and let us know what the number is. And that's something that I don't think has clearly been done yet, but something that they're looking at, but it's probably could be as much as double that number. The GBC and the business community stand together, stand ready to work with city leaders such as yourself, other representatives in City Hall, the mayor, city council president, philanthropic community, corporate foundations, individual businesses, to roll up our sleeves and try to find solutions to address the digital divide in these various phases that Dr. Santelisis laid forward. We are in discussions currently with a number of different groups, philanthropic groups and others, about how we address that long-range solution that Councilman Pinkett also referenced earlier on, similar to what has been done in cities such as Chicago and Philadelphia that Mr. Banks had referenced earlier. We hope that we can put together some effort. I think obviously City Hall has got to be a major player in that as well and bring all the parties together, representatives of the Digital Equity Coalition and others who have been involved in this process to see what we can do to figure out if there is a way to address it as other cities have that Councilman Pinkett referenced. I thank you for the opportunity to just speak tonight. Appreciate all the people who presented previously. And again, commend you, Chairman Cohen, and the other members of the committee for really the passion and the interest that you have put toward this effort.
Thank you, Mr. Frye, and do appreciate your partnership, particularly on this issue where there's clearly an interest alignment around making sure both our young people and, to your point, to Councilman Pinkett's point, all of our folks who rely on the internet increasingly for work are able to get to it. So again, look forward to future conversations with the GBC and continued support for our school system so that they can do what they need to do in educating our kids.
Thank you.
Got it. All right, moving right along to the philanthropic sector. For those that don't know, the Fund for Educational Excellence has been really situated between entities, the school system, the philanthropic community, city government, just played a tremendous role in supporting the acquisition of devices, in getting the, when we passed the bill to bring $3 million to City Schools for Chromebook acquisition. Fund for Educational Excellence was there to support that transfer, just doing an exceptional job at keeping all the parties together and at the table. The CEO is with us or president is with us, Roger Schulman. Roger, thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate you having me. Oh, can you guys hear me? Can you hear me? Okay, great. I appreciate you having me here tonight. And as you referenced a few minutes ago, we're into hour three, so I will try to be efficient in my comments. So really quickly, about March 13th, Dr. Santelisis gave me a call and asked if we could establish a fund at the Fund for Educational Excellence specifically for emergency needs inside of Baltimore City Public Schools. And since that time, we've raised about $2.1 million for emergency needs of the school system. The vast majority of that money has been designated towards the technology needs of the school systems, devices and internet specifically. One of the things, and I think actually tonight's hearing really emphasizes this, there's been a lot of talk about a city coming together. And I think the city has come together in a pretty impressive way over the last several months. And people have talked about that tonight. Our business community, the city council with the $3 million, the private dollars that we've been able to raise to support this effort, the incredible work of the students and the teachers and our nonprofit partners who are all working together. And I think it's really, really important for that work to continue. And it was great to hear Dr. Santelisis's presentation because the school system under her leadership and with Chief Hike Hubbard and Dr. Sarah Heaton have done an extraordinary job, not perfect, as we've all mentioned, but an extraordinary job responding to this. But one of the things that strikes me in this conversation is that it seems that we are, to a certain degree, normalizing this sense that it should be our school system leading the charge on citywide internet. And I just want to say, as I've been listening to this conversation, I don't want to normalize that. Our schools, that is not the job of a public school system to figure out how to get internet access and to figure out how to get mobile hotspots. They've done it and they've done it well because they've had to, but that is not the long-term answer. And I just want to be sure we're saying that pretty explicitly. I also want to talk a little bit about some of the other partnerships that are happening in other cities because I think they're great and I think they're an excellent example of how a city, a school system, the business community, the philanthropic community can all come together to rally resources to support what is a clear need. But I also, at least if my understanding of those partnerships is correct, in years three and four, well, one thing is, those partnerships have been described as free. They are not free. They're being paid for by philanthropy and city agencies. And that they are free, they are no cost to the recipients, but they are not free internet. And I want to be really explicit about that, too. And I do think it's important to note, at least based on my understanding, I'm happy to be corrected if I'm wrong, that in years three and four of all of those agreements, at least the ones I've seen, the bill goes to the school system. And I just, as we look at what is happening in our economy and we start to anticipate what the financial resources available to our schools what the financial resources available to our school system are going to be and what the financial needs are going to be for our school system, I'm very worried those agreements are kicking the can down the field. And in years three and four, we're going to be back to where we are, trying to figure out how a school system finds the resources to pay for internet. And there is no doubt in the context of this conversation, internet is critical. We're going to do what we have to do to make sure that every child in the city has access to internet. But internet, as people have stated, you know, it should be a public utility at this point. It is not just children who need internet. We could not be having this meeting tonight without the internet. I could not do my work on a daily basis without the internet. I am not the only one. It is not just for kids and learning. So, and I've been really heartened by the way that people have participated in this for the last five and a half months. Hope it continues. I hope we can expand it, and I really want to push us to do even more, and that this can't lie at the foot of the school system solely, and I know that that's what this hearing is about, so I appreciate that. But we have to figure this out in the big picture. And I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you tonight and appreciate everyone else who spoke. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Roger. Appreciate your testimony and your leadership. And yeah, to your point, amen. It should not fall on the feet of the school system to solve what truly is, not even really just a Baltimore problem, this is a American problem, right? If we had a, I'm going to be, take off my councilman hat for one quick second, if we had a functional FCC, Congress, leadership from the president, we wouldn't even be having this conversation, right? It is so clear that cities, rural areas, jurisdictions across America simply need internet to function right now, in this global pandemic, Dianu, but also outside of this global pandemic, right? So this is a conversation that should be led at the national level, that should be led by the FCC, by the president, by our Congress. It's not. It has fallen to us. Sadly, it has fallen all the way to our school systems. And to your point, which I also think is really astute, I hope that as we move toward whatever grand bargain we need to make in Baltimore with Comcast, with other nonprofit players like Rowdy Orbit and Project Waves, with everybody at the table, that at the end of the day, we don't just transfer the bill onto city schools because, or onto city government, quite frankly, frankly, onto our taxpayers, because I think that is not the right solution either. So as we think about what this partnership should look like, again, I think it is really going to take commitment from all parties, as we've seen over the last few months, with people really digging in and coming together to figure this out. So again, appreciate your testimony and your leadership. All right. That concludes some of the testimony we're going to hear tonight. We are now going to turn it over to public testimony. Again, we're at around 8:15. I appreciate everyone hanging in there. Jennifer, could you help take us through the attendee list and those that want to testify?
Yes.
Yes.
Hold on a second.
Thank you. And again, appreciate everyone's patience this evening for this really important conversation.
We would like you to use the hand, raise hand function to indicate that you wish to testify, and you can raise your hand at any time. And at this time, we're in the public testimony portion of the hearing. Each speaker must state their name prior to testifying. And for phone attendees, attendees who call in cannot be identified by name and will be unmuted by the committee staff one by one during the public testimony portion of the hearing. Attendees will hear two beeps when they are unmuted. If you do not wish to testify, please say so when you are unmuted. If you do wish to testify, please state your name at the beginning of your testimony. If a speaker isn't inaudible, they will be directed to call back. So that's, hold on a second. All right, so we'll move to the first attendee. They, they don't have the hand raise function, so I'll go to the first caller on the list, attendee list. Hello? Would you like to speak? Okay, move to the next one. Ms. Channel TV, DeWanna. Okay, Mrs. Fabiola Donatato, would you like to speak? Gary Sheridan, would you like to speak? Haru P., would you like to speak?
I'd like to say thank you to everybody who is paying attention to this very important subject and for taking the time.
Thank you so much for your comment.
Just real quick, Mr. Haru P., were you, were you finished? Just want to make sure you get to say everything you need to say.
Mr. Haru?
No, I was done. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much for tuning in.
Jason Rodriguez, would you like to speak?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Good evening, council. Good evening, council members, council president. Thank you for this opportunity. I'll be really quick. So I represent the frontline community. And what we've been seeing since November 15th, I'm sorry, since March 15th, when we went into this pandemic protocols, as far as the school is concerned, we saw that when we shifted to virtual learning, that many students became disenfranchised. Families that had issues prior with Comcast that did not have Comcast service at all, didn't even have Comcast Essential Service, because the rule at the time was you had to have a bill that was over a year old in order to qualify for the Comcast Essential Service. They just made some of these changes and amenities recently. But for the last three months of the school semester, many children struggled to try to convert over to the virtual learning, and many of those families are still dealing with these same issues at this time. I represent currently three families that I bring to the table. Yolanda Pulley, Joyce Jones, well, Yolanda Pulley from the Howard Park community, Joyce Jones from the Emerson Village community, Dorothy O'Bannon from the Park Heights community. All three of these families have recently tried to work with Comcast in dealing with prior billing issues and prior billing discrepancies to try to get at least the Comcast Essential Service. Two of these families are currently without internet service, and one family has chose to go to a prepaid service, which is almost the same speed offerings that Comcast is offering, but at a $45 price. So they're paying almost three times as much for the Comcast Essential Service through a prepaid service, which Comcast had no issue coming out and allowing them to install in the home, but would not allow them to get the Comcast service, Essential Service to their home. We're seeing dozens of families like this throughout Baltimore City that are dealing with these same issues. And going into this new school year, since we see that we're going into a virtual learning environment, many of these students are going to be disenfranchised come this school semester and are still struggling with trying to get internet access. And although I commend the school system for trying to provide access by providing hotspot for some of the middle school and elementary students, the speeds that are given on the T-Mobile mobile hotspots are not really efficient for more than one child. And the speeds, because of different technical issues, you know, capacity, things of that nature, can vary very tremendously, even more than the Comcast service can. So these students are struggling to get onto virtual learning with these mobile hotspots. These are the complaints that we're seeing within the community. And I don't, you know, I, I understand, I heard the testimony from the two Comcast representatives, but they are telling, you know, a mistrue when they say that customer service is working with these families and directing them to ensure that they get access to internet. It is not true. We are seeing it firsthand on the ground, that this is not true. And they are not being good stewards under this current environment, under this pandemic. And I feel that they can do a lot more in assuring during this pandemic, even if it's just a year moratorium or even a two-year moratorium. I'm sure that Comcast could find it within their heart, with, within their business practice, within their, their, their so-called models and creeds, as far as their business operations is concerned, to extend that olive branch to the community so that our students can have a successful school year. You're right, they are an essential service. They should be stepping up and doing whatever they need to do to ensure that our students have a great start to the new school year. And thank you, council, and thank you, committee, for the time this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. Very much appreciate your work on the ground, and thanks for being with us here tonight. Back to you, Jennifer. Jennifer, you still?
I'm sorry. I'm so sorry.
No worries.
Kirby, would you like to speak? Joy Lawson, would you like to speak? Priste Fox, would you like to speak? Michael Desmond, would you like to speak?
Yes, I would.
Go right ahead.
My name is Michael Desmond, and I represent the Travis Manion Foundation as the regional lead for the Mid-Atlantic region. My home is here in Baltimore, and I would like to speak on behalf of our work as a nonprofit that works in character education with youth. As one of the nation's leading veteran nonprofit organizations, we expanded our emphasis on mental health and wellbeing for our members as we faced this COVID crisis. Recognizing many of our veterans' families in fallen communities are feeling isolated and unsure what the future holds with COVID-19, we adapted our programs to operate virtually and provide free support to those who are in need. So with that, TMF has adapted many of those resources, which have been done in person, to now offer a plethora of online engagement opportunities, and so closing the digital divide is more important than ever, so our veterans are able to reach students across Baltimore City with informed programming. I sent the month since this pandemic hit in constant conversation with our partners at Baltimore City Public Schools, funders, teachers, principals, and corporate partners to include Comcast, to bridge the gap, to ensure the same connections we provide youth in person typically will be sustained this year. This includes the Baltimore Student-Athletes Leadership Council powered by Under Armour Freedom to mentor student athletes from every Baltimore City public high school, as we have done in the past two years, a program that we have improved each year since its inception. And the lesson we teach to diversity and diverse experiences of our veterans, and to these youth, is that we must recognize that we all contain the strengths that we can leverage to meet our community's challenge. No single entity can once resolve the challenges we face bridging the digital divide. As we teach our youth, every leader in this community needs to come together and develop a solution. Simply, we must ask all of ourselves, if not me, then who? And then rise to meet this challenge. It is heartening for me to hear how Dr. Santelisus, as well as my own council member, Z. Cohen, have worked hard and continue to seek solutions to ensure our students have the tools they need to be successful in and out of the classroom. I would encourage this committee to bring, to begin to look at the long-term and sustainable ways to bridge the digital divide by working alongside our community-based organizations, school system leaders, and internet service providers to build networks of social engagement throughout our community for education, out-of-school-time programming, and mental health support. We know we need to go beyond simply providing home Wi-Fi and computers to respond to the needs of our students right now. TMF Spartans are committed to being a part of the solution and serving through our city while we are still keeping members safe and respecting social and visiting imperatives. We have so much expertise and energy in Baltimore, we just need to bring it all together and work together for one shared mission. As a veteran of the Iraq and Afghanistan wars, I enlisted in the Marine Corps inspired by the call to action after 9/11. I follow this dedication to my country overseas, where I've worked in multinational collaborations, including multiple service branches, federal agencies, corporations, and any other entities which you can think of. At this time more than ever, our next generation of leaders is watching us. It is those eyes that will see us work together and exemplify the cooperation and unity necessary to accomplish digital equity for Baltimore youth. COVID-19 is a great tragedy, as was September 11th, and as we rise to see the anniversary of that occasion occur again in September, we need to look at ourselves and know that the children persevering through this time will be the next ones who are inspired towards service. And we need to ensure that every single one of those students is highly educated and trained to face the, face the future crises that we will see. And so it's time to collaborate and compromise right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Desmond, both for your service to our country and to our children. Please know that your work is seen and appreciated. Thank you so much for being with us here tonight as well.
Nira, would you like to speak?
Oh, actually, I'm sorry. My name is Yolanda. It's, it's under my granddaughter's name, unfortunately. I'm sorry. Yes, I would like to, I would like to speak. My name is Yolanda Jackson. I'm, just want to give my experience, testify to give my experience with virtual learning. I'm a primary caregiver of a first grader and a 12th grade Baltimore City student, and these are very important times in the development of younger minds. I will tell you that I have struggled through virtual learning despite having excellent city educators. It looks like to me, I mainly take care of my grandchild, and it looks like she may possibly need additional support that I'm not equipped to give her, and I am worried about the quality of her education. Will she be able to keep up with her peers in the virtual learning space? Mainly, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm so nervous. Mainly, I am worried because I'm an essential employee, but I know that as the economy depresses and budgets get smaller, unemployment is a very real possibility to me, and I'm concerned that I'll be able to keep up with the Comcast Essential Service should I lose my employment. All I want to do is provide adequate education for both of my children, and so I'm hoping that Baltimore City Schools and Comcast can, can work a deal out to support myself as a parent. Thank you for letting me talk.
Just want to say thank you. Thank you for your work as a parent. Thank you for your work as a grandparent, and thank you so much for your advocacy and taking part in this hearing tonight. Just know that your voice is heard and appreciated.
Sam Musgrave, would you like to speak? Sandy Arnett, would you like to speak? Sophia Butler, would you like to speak?
Hi, yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I just want to start by saying I want to restate what others have said. I, a lot of things are really confusing to me, a lot of the statements from Comcast. For example, they claim that they're not a monopoly, but as others have said, we really need to see these maps of fiber optic cables and rights of way to be able to, to verify that and understand the situation. We can't really verify that because we don't have the transparency from Comcast. You know, we've also heard that they reach or they have broadband that they can provide to all neighborhoods, but they did not say that they- they can provide to all neighborhoods, but they did not say that they could provide it to all houses or all people. So I think that that's really unclear also. And in summary, I don't understand why Comcast cannot or will not do more on behalf of our students and schools to provide broadband access and consequently access to education at this time and going forward.
Again, thank you so much for being with us tonight and for your testimony. Appreciate it.
Sophia Butler, would you like to speak? Councilman, we have someone from, I think we have two, three callers maybe, and then the news media, WBAL and Fox 45. Would you like me to go to those two or go to the callers?
Yes, ma'am, whoever wants to speak.
Okay. Would you like to speak, Fox 45? WBAL, would you like to speak? Youth Committee, would you like to speak? Okay, and that should take care of that.
And the folks that were on the phone?
Uh, hold on a moment. It says two in teleconference. I don't have any others. It has here. Yeah, I've went through the entire list. There were two callers and I've asked them already initially.
All right. Great. Well, again, I want to thank everyone for participating in tonight's conversation. This is a really important moment for our city, both in the short term, as has been shared, just the need to close the gap and make sure every single child can learn for the duration of this school year and into the next. But longer term, making sure the Internet is accessible, is free, is treated like the public utility that it truly is. So again, I want to thank all the folks from G B C, Comcast, Fund for Educational Excellence, our educators, our school system, students, parents, my colleagues on the city council, and everyone else who contributed to this hearing tonight. Also want to very much thank Jennifer Coats and Anne Coy, who staffed this committee and did an outstanding job of it. It is a three and a half hour hearing, and I sincerely appreciate both of you. Thank you very much. This concludes the Education and Youth Committee Hearing. This hearing is now adjourned.